Call this meeting Tacoma Park City Council in order. Court, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Bennett.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Yeah.
Are there any council comments? Councilmember Victoria.
Look at that, I got my hand up first. Hello, my apologies for being absent last week. I did watch, however, the city council meeting and I thought I would make my comments on the Public Safety Commission since that was the main topic of debate. I listened to what everything, everybody said and felt like I agreed a lot with Councilmember Clay. Well, agreed with something everyone had to say. But in my view, from what I've seen, it seems like the committee doesn't really have a function right now, the PSCAC, and we, I would recommend tabling that committee or shelving it until the council figures out what they're going to do and also until we see possibly how the chief's advisory council, what they seem to be taking care of. I'd also note that we got a notice of assault this weekend, which certainly sounds unfortunate. And, you know, we continue to have problems all over the city with crime. Hopefully both the chief's committee and other people interested in public safety will help us get citizens more involved in crime prevention on their own and helping the police. That's it.
And if I can just follow up on your observation on the Public Safety Committee. My sense was that what we ought to do is decide whether to put that committee on hold pending a council discussion of revised mission for the committee to see whether there was, whether the council was comfortable in saying that the committee should go forward with that focused sense. I know that the committee was asking for more direction, the council wanted to give more direction and maybe, I don't know, maybe the thing to do is to just have a brief discussion. Maybe we can try and shoehorn it into next week's agenda to have a quick item on that to, so that we can have a formal vote whether to keep them active at this point or whether to put them on hold. Because my sense after all of the discussion happened was that there may in fact be a majority of the council who doesn't want to continue that committee. So I think in spite of the sense that I got a good bit of the way through the discussion that the majority of the council did want that, that may in fact not be the case. So maybe a short discussion to refine, to talk about having a further discussion to refine it would be in order. So we'll think about that for next week. Councilmember Robinson.
I agree that, I agree with that approach to have a discussion about whether we want it to continue. I'm undecided but more leaning towards really waiting on reinvoking them or reenlivening them until we do have some sense, if we can get a sense of what we want them to do. So I'm not in favor of letting them kind of hang in the wind, but rather to be definitive about putting them on hiatus of some sort. Yes, the crime, the two crimes, one on Columbia and one at Tulip and Maple have been discussed at some length in my work and people are concerned, I think, more because the one on Tulip and Maple involved a knife or a razor, was described as a razor, and the one on Columbia involved a baseball bat, which is, ouch, just to think about it is painful. And that kind of, that kind of violence, I think people are wondering where's that coming from? Why are people going to those lengths? And, I mean, at least people aren't shooting other people. I guess that's a blessing in some ways, but, so it's very much on people's minds. And I, Chief, I see you sitting in the audience and I tell people what I heard you say a number of times, these are different times, we have to be careful, lock your cars and your, and your houses. And the crime is not actually going up from a statistical perspective, so this is a bad, this was a bad week, but we're not in a bad time. But it is, but we have to look out, look out the window, call the police department and look after each other. So I have been saying that. I also got a, an email today and I had something of, beginnings of an email conversation with council, with the city manager Matthews about the community band. The community band still feels like they're unclear on what their status is as regards Hefner Auditorium and the use of that space for their practices and for the storage of their music, which, and I can understand why they want a place to store their music so that they can meet regularly, do their practices, have that, have those materials at hand. I think that when we talked about it last, I think it might have been March, so it was a good while ago, we didn't really come to a conclusion. My understanding is that the filing cabinets are still there. So I would ask us to at least consider that in some way and maybe we can do a little more talk and research before we come to that. I won't talk about dogs tonight.
Oh, man. Damn.
And that, those are the end of my comments.
Therefore, I'm done.
Councilmember Clay.
I also got contacted from the, by the band again and sent a reminder to the city manager who I think is going to put it on the list of things to talk about with the mayor for agendas, is that correct? Okay, great. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to say is party, my house, October 30th. It's the annual Ward Two Halloween Party. Did the mayor, did the mayor agree to come and be the special guest this year?
Yeah.
Dunk tank?
The mayor's going to be our special guest this year. There's no dunk tank. We do occasionally throw pine cones at each other, but that's pretty much it. One time we had a bonfire and the fire department came by and told us it was illegal, but...
I figured I was going to come as an off-leash dog.
An off-leash dog, excellent.
That's terrific.
Well, there's a, there's actually, we're having a little bit of a rock and roll theme this year. So we are encouraging people to come as their favorite dead rock star, or live rock star if they prefer. But anyway, the party is, I think, from five to eight at my house. It's a, it's a potluck, we do it every year. It's kid-friendly and if the weather allows us, we'll again have a big old haunted house out in the front yard, which is mostly the domain of the kids. So that's, that's it for the annual Ward Two Halloween Party. I hope all the council members will come if they're available. Friday night.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're on parties, I just wanted to mention that the mayor has considered having a pool party after the council session on November 16th. I believe November 16th session is the swearing-in of the new council members and the council will then, it's usually a brief session and the council members can then follow in a short reception here at the city hall, go across the street to the Pony Branch Elementary School Pool and get to see the pool in action and also participate, go swimming.
And if you guys are still with us, well, you'll both be there.
And...
And...
And if we're not...
If we're not, we'll be at the bottom of the pool.
So this is Wednesday night?
November 16th.
Oh, 16th, sorry.
Monday night and...
So can we do the council meeting in our swimsuits?
That is up to those who are still on the council.
Well, win or lose, everybody gets to come to the meeting.
Yes, and therefore go to the reception and therefore go to the pool.
Yeah.
Swimsuits are in parade, but, you know, up to you.
Whoa, this is getting serious now.
I mean, we should all be questioning whether we'll be up there because there's been, you know, writing campaigns where people have won unexpectedly before.
That is so true.
There's going to be a lot of press and people there.
I think it'll be great. We can all come in our swimsuits, including all the candidates. Because you know, if you don't win the election, you get conscribed to one of the long-term, hard-working committees, so.
That's so true.
Just indoctrinate them early.
Hold their feet to the fire and put them out in the pool.
That's right.
Councilmember Wright. What humor can you contribute to that?
Well, mine's going to be, I think, a little bland. I've been out door knocking and just wanted to share some of the themes I've been hearing. Safety is definitely the highest theme that I hear at almost every door. People concerned about, very recently concerned about the two crimes that were mentioned earlier, but also a great deal of angst about car break-ins and car thefts. So I know that the chief is here to talk to us about this tonight and I know that the police department is working very hard and diligently to make our city, keep our city safe, but it is the number one issue I hear about. There's a couple pedestrian slash car issue, traffic issues I've heard a bit about. Chicago Avenue and 410, which we've been promised by the state highway we would get some pedestrian improvements there, still haven't come. I know the city manager has, again, prodded state highway and so I'm going to also reach out to, with Barb's guidance, to people there and also to Senator Raskin and Delegate Missouri. At the corner of Carroll Avenue, when you're going into town and you take a right on Philadelphia, apparently the green arrowed right-hand turn signal there is out, so people don't know that they can take a right and it's bottleneck as it is anyway. Also related to the junction, I've been told by a number of people that the walk lights at the junction actually have nothing to do with the buttons there that you push. They're just on a regular cycle and so they go on to walk whether you're, need someone to walk or not, which exacerbates the traffic issue, but also you get people who are pedestrians who come up and try and push the thing and then wonder what's going on, nothing happens, it's a long cycle, and so then they just walk in traffic anyway. So I think we need to resolve that issue with state highway. If we're going to have push buttons there, then they should actually work as push buttons. If it's going to be on a cycle, we should have a sign that says it'll be on a cycle and wait. Two issues I've been hearing about related to the school system, which we don't have any official authority over, but one is that people are happy with the outcome of the boundary study recommendation that Superintendent Weest has come up with. I think most, most if not all, my council members are happy about that as well. And I think the city staff is preparing a resolution for us to pass next council meeting and send to the, to the Board of Ed to encourage them to pass it and thank Superintendent Weest. And we need to do that because we are known here in Tacoma Park for objecting to things. We should also be thankful when people abide by our requests or do what we like. And then the second thing is I've heard from a fair number of constituents who, whose kids, like Councilmember Clay's daughter...
Party under the seats.
Are riding the bus and are not happy with what's going on on the buses and are feeling very unsafe and insecure about that. And I think it's an outrage that they don't, won't spend the extra money to put a supervisor on the buses. So I think we definitely need to get on the phone and get the school system here to, in front of us and talk to us about it in a public forum. I know Councilmember Clay has requested that before and I again reiterate that I support that and that I'm hearing about that from my constituents. The last item is a pretty simple one, but an interesting item that a constituent suggested, which is on the tree order form, when people are allowed to order their, the bulk tree purchased, that we actually put a line item for them to contribute extra money to the tree fund and that they could just make out their, their check for the additional money. Similar to, you know, we get, we get a mailing to contribute to the emergency fund if we want to and it would just be easy in the process that we already have and the extra money could just go into the tree fund. She did also ask why we couldn't do those things electronically and I know we've been trying to increase the amount of electronic commerce that the city's done. I know we've done that for reserving the rooms and I thought that was kind of the first step of having electronic commerce for other services or functions that the city does. And so I hope that we can get that back on track in terms of starting to do additional electronic commerce, like being able to buy your parking permit electronically, particularly a renewal, tree purchases, probably library fines, I don't think you can do that electronically. That's it for me.
Were you saying you can't do your parking permits electronically? I thought you could.
No, you can, you can mail it in, you can mail in your parking permit renewal form or you can come in, but you can't, you can't do it electronically. And, yeah.
Councilmember...
Thank you. I have something down my throat. Just a, gosh, I attended a COG forum on obesity in schools. It's actually a little broader than that. It wasn't just obesity, the intention was to look at, the intention was to look at nutrition in general. And one of the interesting reports concerned that kids walking to school, I know you're all shocked, has an impact on their physical fitness, health and weight as well and that it occurred to me that we still have some places in Tacoma Park that could use sidewalks and I urge us to continue to, I know it's on a slow schedule, but continue to build sidewalks in Tacoma Park so kids can more safely walk to school.
Thanks. I've got a couple of quick items. I just wanted to note for the record the passing of Ruth Abbott, who's the widow of former mayor Sam Abbott. And there was a very nice party at her house yesterday and a lot of people were there, saw a lot of people who haven't seen in a long time and there was a very nice musical tribute to both her and Sam and so we've lost a very active member of the community. Also wanted to share with folks, Councilmembers Snipper and Wright and I attended a MML meeting last week with Senator Cardon and that was very informative, talking with him about various issues. And one of the other things that happened at the meeting was the MML staff came and presented the Banner City Awards and the city received that for the first time and so I wanted to show folks the banner that goes with the Banner City. We also got a plaque that we'll be able to put up and if we continue to get the award in multiple years, it'll, we have a place to put those years on the plaque, but...
Maybe you could describe what a Banner City is?
Yeah. I think maybe the city manager could do a good job at describing what a Banner City is. We had, we had to meet a number of criteria. I know one of them was, I'll come up with the ones I know. We had to, it measures participation in the Maryland Municipal League in committees and the chapter. It has to do with talking to kids in schools. What else?
Those are the main ones. Also, I think one of the things you can do is highlight either snapshots, episodes, something in your city newsletter explaining the functions of various city departments and then the criteria that the mayor mentioned.
So it's making sure that we participate and that everybody knows what cities do. And the final thing I wanted to mention was there's a meeting next Wednesday from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning, I'm assuming in Rockville, for the Montgomery County Census get-together. And it would be good if the city is represented, I'm not available, if any of my colleagues might be available to go, that would be good and see the city manager for the particulars.
What, sorry, what day is that?
Next Wednesday, the, what would that be?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, twenty-seven?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning. And that finishes council comments. And the next item is, there are no additional agenda items. I will highlight a couple scheduling updates. Next week, we do have scheduled a resolution in support of the superhensification of on the school battery changes. We also have a resolution approving an amendment to the land lease agreement with the co-op on the city lot. And then we have a number of work session items of importance. We're going to have a presentation on the sidewalk study, a discussion of the resident survey and discussion of the special exception request for the dental office at 8012 Flower And that's next Monday, the 26th. The following Monday, November 2nd, there is no council meeting as that's the night before the election and the city clerk will have commandeered the building and be very busy getting ready for the election. And then the election on Tuesday, November 3rd and the special meeting to receive and certify the election results on the following day, Wednesday, the 4th. At this point, we don't have a meeting scheduled on the 9th and then the inauguration of the new council, reception and swim on the 16th.
So nothing on the 9th?
Nope.
How did that happen?
If we need a meeting on the 9th, we can do a meeting on the 9th, but the sense was if we can not do one, we'll, we won't do one. And the city manager just gave me a look and said, "Don't you dare schedule on the 9th."
No, I was just going to remind you, Mayor, that we had talked about inviting the school officials to talk about the bus transportation safety concerns on the 9th since the council was not scheduled to hold a formal meeting. We have not confirmed that yet, but that's the date we're working with, hoping to get a school official here.
So we would be affected as well? Am I right? Yeah, I mean, I'm just, there's no meeting except that we have to be here, so...
Right, it's tentative, but that's the date we're working towards.
Okay.
That's normally on your calendar.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So the next item on the agenda is public comment period. For anybody who would like to make any comments, please come to the microphone, identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Ward 4. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. One is, are they going to be having a citywide children's party for Halloween because, you know, I don't think with the crime going on and the, and the recent rise in abductions around the country on children, that we should encourage trick-or-treating unless they are with competent adults. You know, we should make sure they are with teams with adults if they're going to do the daring act of trick-or-treating because the world is not the same as it was when we were kids. And I was hoping the city would have a citywide party for the ones that don't want to go trick-or-treating and the families that feel discouraged about the idea of that because as we know nowadays, it's pretty dangerous, you know, especially with the crimes that we just had in our, in our neighborhoods and also with the, with the crime around the country. Because, you know, a mistake like that can only happen once and it cannot be reversed usually. Second thing I'd like to do is ask anybody out there who's voting, and that's the city, to reiterate the importance of voting. You know, we have a pretty good councilman in Ward 4 now, we have a really, really great one. And if we want to keep him and if we want to, want to work to have our city made better, then we have to get out and participate in voting. I know we've got a lot of registered voters in Ward 4, but they have to at least show some caring for our city by doing the adult responsible thing, is getting out and voting. It does not take that much just to go out and fill out a ballot and come down and vote for your councilman, you know? You know, because they, they do a lot for us in our city, they, they take the time out to run for office and they take the time out to come back and run again and again for office because they care about our city. We have to come out and show that we care about our city also. You know, it's very difficult, you know, when something goes wrong and you hear everybody complaining, "Oh, I wish we did this, I wish we did that." Well, you can't go back in time and change that. The best thing to do is if you want to have something, get out and vote. It's not that hard. Please. You know, and also whenever we have demonstrations, you know, to protest the war and protest the death penalty, got to remember, those are human lives also on the line, you know, and we got to come out and participate in that. This is Tacoma Park, a city of peace, a city of activism. We cannot just sit on our keisters and do nothing while, while our city goes down the tubes, you know? We got to get out and vote and get out and participate in our city. I'd like to see more of the schools sending the children down here to the city councils to learn about our government, how our government works. I would like to see that. But the main thing is 15 days from now, please, I want to see as many people out there to get out and vote. If I can do it in my condition, then damn it, there's no reason why other cities cannot, other people cannot get out and vote too. Show us that we are a city of activism and vote. That's our most precious right. Vote. V-O-T-E. Vote. Thank you. Next one again?
I know the city has a number of events for Halloween. There's a parade and different things...
Costume contest, those are, we're just looking that up to make sure they're being held on, since Halloween falls on a Saturday, they're being held on the 31st.
31st costume, Tiffany's, Towne Towne version.
Yeah, the costume contest is at four o'clock at the intersection of Carroll and Laurel and then the parade is scheduled to begin at approximately 4:45, immediately following the costume contest.
Good. Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the city manager's comments.
Thank you. Earlier this evening there had been comments by several council members about concerns in the community about some recent crimes. I'd ask Chief, if he could come this evening and take the time under my report to share with the council and with our residents what the police department is doing in response.
Welcome, Chief. We haven't seen you in a week.
Well, I wish I was here under better circumstances, but I'm not. And I promised you three years ago I'd come when I had good news and I'd come when I have bad news. Obviously, there's some crime occurring in the community, so what I'd like to do tonight is bring you all up to date on what has occurred and what we're doing about it and what the citizens can do to help us. Over the weekend, we had 14 cars broken into throughout the city. Twelve of the vehicles were broken into...
Twelve of the vehicles were broken into, two were locked. One was locked, one was unlocked, and one was left open with windows, which allowed them to get in. Various items were taken from GPS, iPods, cash, credit cards, a coach purse, which I know is very important, iPod radio tumors, sunglasses, CDs, and even what is known as a civilian-issued taser. In these cases, which occurred, we had two on West Moreland, one on Eastern, one on Montgomery Avenue, one, two, three, six on Lee, one on Tula, one on Maple, one on Sherman, and one on Holt Place. They went through the city. We think they started probably close to after midnight. And we think they were even in the city up to when the sun came up because some of the credit cards were used around 11 o'clock in the morning at Metro Station, at a shoe store, and at a 7-Eleven. We do have photos, which we're looking at from one store already. I looked at it tonight. We're going to try to enhance it and get it out there so everybody can take a look at it, see if anyone recognizes. And we will be getting more photos tomorrow from the 7-Eleven, and hopefully we can enhance them and put them out there. So for once, we do have a picture of the suspect. Suspect tried to use a credit card, it was rejected, but we got a pretty good picture of the suspect and hopefully we'll have on the 7-Eleven. So we're still working on that right now.
Could you just reiterate again the cars that were locked and unlocked?
This time, I can praise our community. Twelve of the cars were locked, two were unlocked. So we're doing much better in that category. Obviously, property and cars, I can't emphasize, you just can't leave property in cars. What we're learning is even if the car is locked and they're still breaking into cars if they see property, and a lot of this property was right in open view, it is a crime of choice by a lot of our criminals right now to break into cars. They're getting stuff that they can pawn, stuff that sells quickly on the street. And, you know, we ask citizens to take stuff in, especially wallets and purses and things like that. It makes no sense to leave them in the cars. So we emphasize that. To give you a little update, obviously, there was another robbery over the weekend. Our victim is recovering. He had surgery yesterday. We spoke to him today and his family, and he's recovering. There will be no after effects other than the trauma of being a robbery victim. Fortunately, he was a resident of the state of Virginia who'd come to visit his aunt here in Tacoma Park, and he'd get a very warm welcome, but we tried to do our best as handling him as a victim of a crime. What is concerned to us is that we're seeing more and more violence associated with crime. As one who looks at all the crime in the county on a daily basis, it's been happening in Montgomery County, and it's concerned me. It was only a matter of time, not that we're giving into it, but we're starting to see some of the violence that they've experienced. With the baseball back robbery of two weeks ago and with the use of the knife the other night, there was no reason, they had their money and it just, it was a random, there was no reason. It's what you call random violence, which is frightening to us and to this community. And I want to assure the community we are aware of it and we're doing everything we can to obviously change that. What are we doing? Obviously, residents want to know that. We've increased uniform patrols. I am visiting roll calls. I met with our detectives today, and we've increased our plainclothes patrol. We're going to especially be targeting late at night now, when it seems to be some of these robberies and these thefts are obviously occurring. We were already targeting the larcenies from the autos, but now we're obviously looking for robberies. It's getting darker sooner, and we want to increase up our patrols, especially around the metro station and those that walk home late at night. The robberies and thefts are obviously the number one priority right now. We believe the three suspects the other night came from a go-go dance, which was held in DC right on the line. We've gotten some information that may direct us to that, so we're following up that lead, obviously. Part of our problem with the other night is our victim did not get a look at his suspects, and that hurts, obviously. But we want, residents, as I said, are locking their cars. We want them to be careful at night when they are walking late at night, to be cognizant of what's happening. This victim did see them coming in his direction. He didn't have a chance. They were walking right down the middle of the street. Please, please call if you see anything suspicious. We had fourteen crimes occur, probably over a five-hour period. We got no phone calls. I know it was raining and it was one night you'd probably look outside, but that didn't stop then, as they worked throughout the night. As you can see, they went throughout the city, hitting different locations in different areas. It is an area-wide problem, as I said before. Montgomery County, Fairfax, all the jurisdictions are experiencing breaking in autos. It's a quick crime. Fortunately, there's property, they're making it quicker. It's a lot safer to get away, so it means we have to be more vigilant as we ask our residents to be. And I want to assure the residents, we're taking this very seriously. I will keep you informed, but every member of the department is making it a priority. We will keep you updated and let you know as things happen. For trick-or-treat, since it was brought up, we will have extra officers out in the community patrolling that night to make sure we keep our children safe. As was mentioned earlier, it's obviously a priority for us, but obviously trick-or-treat sometimes can be an open time for crimes. I hate to say it, but I've seen it over the years, so we will increase our patrols there. That brings you up to date. Obviously, I wish I had better news, but I don't. And crime is a little bit on the upswing right now, and we are taking it very seriously. And we'll continue to keep you updated as things change. And when we make arrests, we'll obviously put it out there. It's a lot easier putting out nicer information, but we also need to let the citizens know when things are not going right.
Thank you, chief. Councilmember Wright?
Just was curious about how we're increasing the patrols. Does that mean we have to do that with overtime or?
No, I'm able to do it with what I have. It's just switching hours and routes. We have people out, target the hours when the crimes are.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Clark?
The last four years, when fall has come, kind of, my recollection is that this happens every fall, essentially, that there is an increase in crime as it starts to get darker earlier, and it lasts until about the time when the first snow comes. I don't know if that seems reasonable or not to you.
The robberies usually increase during this time, and I always put out a little message, which we did earlier. What's different is the larcenies from auto, and I've been doing this a long time. I have never seen as many cars broken in as I've seen in the last year here in Montgomery County and in the city of Tacoma Park. I mean, it is, it's knocked our crime numbers way out of proportion. I've just never seen, but it seems to be an easier crime, and you can blame the economy, you can blame drug acts. I don't have a reason why other than I think it's a quicker crime now. And I would say probably people keep more values, valuables in their car now than they used to, and that's opened up. GPSs are selling, just sell on the market. You can go down the street, sell one, and you don't even have to go to a pawn shop. That's what hurts us. iPods, they sell on the street. CDs, they're not things they have to pawn, so they're quickly sold on what we call the black market, so it opens up. Normally, robberies pick up, and what's bad about, there's no good robbery, but the violence is what's scary and what upsets me because we're seeing an increase. The county's been seeing a lot more than we have, but you're seeing the use of guns, pistol-whipping people, victims that are complying, and that's a concern.
And the other thing that was interesting about what you said is that you said that there were fourteen incidents on the rainy night, which is kind of unusual, isn't it?
You would not expect criminals. We always say, most criminals stay in when it's wet because they don't want to get wet. And in this case, it's a direct, you rarely see a lot of crimes on a wet night. It's just because it's hard to get away, because of the, if you're in a car, it's not the greatest time to be running from the police. But needless to say, we haven't been able to really, this one, there's no pattern. And before, I'd spoken with Councilman Wright, we'd had three in his district, we had a couple over in Donna's before. This, they went through the whole city, and the worst part is we figured as they went from each car to each car, they were going throughout the city, and nobody saw anything. And we had a full shift working Saturday night. And, you know, they left property. We recovered some property, which is a good thing. We've recovered property in both robberies. We didn't get the money back, but we got the wallets back, so that's a good thing. Saturday night's robbery, we did get his wallet back, but with no money in it, and they'd obviously taken credit cards.
Councilmember Robinson?
A couple of small questions. When you recovered the property, would it have been on the ground, thrown aside?
Yeah.
Do you think it was the same person or group that did all these robbery, the car robberies?
The fourteen of the week, definitely the same person.
Same person?
I have no doubt on that one.
And when, the cars that were locked, did they jimmy doors open or did they break windows?
Break windows.
Break windows. And I think I've asked this before, and I think I know what your answer is going to be, but if someone is walking from the metro and they have a pepper spray can in their purse or pocket, what's your attitude about somebody carrying around pepper spray?
I'd rather see them carrying something that will make a noise, like a sound thing. They scream. That's more likely to scare people away. If you do the pepper spray, I think it agitates the situation, and we have two situations where the victims submitted and still got, were violently attacked. I don't want to see a person getting hurt. The trauma of a robbery is bad enough, and to add it with the violence can associate, I recommend not to get.
So a compressed.
Whistles, saved Tacoma, gave out whistles. They're doing it again, I believe. You can buy these things that make these cows' bells that you hear in graduations. They're not supposed to have, do that. That's a good tool to carry in your purse. I recommend people carry stuff like that.
Okay.
And then obviously, if you're walking alone, having your cellphone and your computer and all that, it's an open invitation. Unfortunately, I know a lot of people have to do that, but you need to be careful.
Thank you.
Could we put out in your, the town's, just the non-meritee number? Because I think a lot of people don't have that number to, that's really what they should have in their cellphone, ready to dial when they're walking home, right? Not the 9-1-1, because that could go, that could end up in Montgomery County.
Well, it goes to Montgomery County, comes to us, but we're also going to, we have a new program we'll be announcing shortly, which will help citizens also to get information to us quicker. And we'll be briefing the city manager on it, bringing it back to you. But we're trying to get as many things where we can get the community calling us. Yeah, we're going to put a community advisory app on this tomorrow with tips on what you should do.
But 9-1-1 doesn't always go.
Well, that's why I say you can call 301-270-1100 and go straight to your Tacoma Park Police Department.
In the places that.
I know what you're talking about.
In the places that were Prince George's County, many of the cellphone relay providers haven't changed the relay so that it goes to Montgomery County, or it's on the border, and those go to.
It goes to the closest cell, and if the cell is in Prince George's, then it'll go there.
Well, even some of the cells that are in Montgomery County that are in the area that used to be Prince George's haven't been switched, though.
270-1100.
Last. Councilmember Robinson?
When someone calls 270-1100, they'll get a dispatcher. What can they expect to say? If they don't know the address they're at, is it adequate to say, "I'm on Tula between Carroll and Laurel"?
What we try to do, and this came up, I think, last week in the discussion, when people call in, we have a protocol we follow. We're going to get as much information because that helps, because by the time we probably get to the victim, the bad guys have left the scene, and our officers, we send one car to the victim, and we circulate the area, which is pretty easy to do because we're a small area. That's why we ask so many questions, which I know upsets people, but those questions help us catch the suspects later. We will talk you through it, and we'll get to you. And a lot of times, people don't know where they're right exactly at. All we do is we ask, we continue to keep them on the line for one, it keeps them safe, and we know what's going on. And the dispatchers are trained, but they are, they have a protocol, they're going to ask a lot of questions. Some people are in, I want you to come, they're starting a car. They will start a car, but they'll also get as much information, so the cars that circulate the area have a better chance of catching the suspect.
The dispatcher can continue to talk to the officer, even if he's en route to that area.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. We'll now move to our special session, and the first voting item is the second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 1312, parking meters. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
Sure, I'll move it.
Move by Councilmember Stepper. Second, my Councilmember Wright.
Just as a quick follow-up to the discussion at the recent meeting, there have been two minor changes made to the ordinance that you reviewed for your first reading. The first is on page two, where it clarifies where the multi-space parking meters could be installed. And the second, to address concerns regarding phase-plugging in of parking meters. On page six, it's been modified to address the amount of time that you end up parking in an individual space as opposed to how frequently or at what point you actually plug the meter or pay the metered zone system. If adopted at the second meeting, these would go into effect immediately. And we would bring administrative regulations back to you probably at the beginning of the year because of the schedule of the publication of the Tacoma Park Newsletter.
And so if you can just clarify the, it would only be after the regulations are ratified that the new zones and things would take effect?
Correct. Or whatever, the current parking regulations that are in place now, nothing will change until the administrative regulations are developed and approved by the city council. And then we would go, in all probability, reestablish those parking zones and those fees that are already included in the ordinance, but it would give us an opportunity to modify them somewhat if it was felt to be appropriate at that point in time, and then in the future.
So the ordinance would take effect immediately?
Right.
But the regulation would take some time, and only when the regulation is complete would what's on the ground change?
Correct. So if you're in a two-hour zone right now, keep putting quarters in there because you will still get a ticket even though the ordinance has changed.
Councilmember Robinson, and then Councilmember Stepper.
Another clarification in that light, there's a section on this document which lists 1312020, which meters are 30 minutes, which meters are 10 cents, which meters are 20 cents, and so forth. Goes on for a couple of pages. Is the intent to remove those sections from this document eventually?
Those will expire once the administrative regulations are in place and the city manager has made a determination as to whether or not these particular parking meter zones, these and the number of meters are appropriate.
I see. In paragraph C, it says, "Until regulations have been adopted." I see.
The key is in full force and effect, so you will get it.
Councilmember Stepper?
Yes, just a quick clarification. When the new regulations are in effect, okay, so if somebody parks, let's say it's a two-hour parking, they park for two hours, and then they move their car to another parking place, that's okay, right?
That's okay. As long as they plug the meter and they don't overstay the two-hour limit.
Now, in DC, they have a similar rule. You can't just keep feeding the meter. And the parking meter officers, whatever, enforcers, I believe it's two blocks. I think they have a general rule about two blocks. And the way they enforce it, of course, they're way more automated than we are, they actually take a picture of your license plate and with the, like the meter, so they can see the meter and license. Anyway, it's very professional. And they've told me that you have to move your car two blocks or they'll get a ticket. I assume we're not moving in quite that.
The District of Columbia is quite unique in many ways.
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of, and I'm not sure we've ever talked about it. And it would explain why I get tickets in DC when I'm there sometimes.
Councilmember Clark?
Should have read this more thoroughly, I'm going to turn around.
Oh, yes. But I think I'll probably just vote against it. So I think maybe the discussion for this came up while I was out, and then it came up for a vote. And we're setting in the policy, in the ordinance, the specific locations of what's a one-hour limit, what's a two-hour limit.
That's already in the ordinance now.
Okay.
Once this is adopted and the administrative regulations are established and approved by the council, then all of that language that specifically identifies the individual zones, the number of parking meters that are there, how much you have to plug in, all of that will become void and will be governed by the zones that are established through this administrative process.
That's what I thought was happening. Good, so I didn't read it wrong to begin.
Yeah, and we left it in here so that there wasn't sort of this parking's free for everybody no matter where you park thing until the rights are developed.
Okay. Why are we doing this? I know that we want to make it, I understand the streamline. What was the impetus that made us realize that we had a crappy regulation process and we needed to change it?
Frankly, I didn't realize how convoluted it was. Frankly, I didn't realize how convoluted it was until I had to explain it to you. And Daryl had been talking to me about West Marland, and I realized that, what is 120 degrees from this particular intersection? This came up when we were going through, initially during the Carol Avenue Commercial Streetscape Improvements, when we were going through and trying to work with the business owners about what meters should be placed where and for how long. And it was a very involved process to do that. And internally, it was like, is this a lot of, it should be, there should be a simpler way to do it. But because that was already in place, we left it. Old Tacoma Business Association has members that have expressed frustration that because of the construction that's going on behind their building, their customers and their employees have limited places to park. And on one side of the street, it's 20 minutes, and the other side, I believe, it's two hours. And that was delivered based on the feedback we got during the Streetscape Improvement Project. And it would be great to be able to say, sure, we will change the parking meters for a six-month period until the construction project is done. But it's not that easy. You have to go, you have to do a work session, you have to have two different council readings. And this will give us a little more flexibility to respond in a more timely manner in those circumstances.
So we're not doing this because someone's got a ticket?
Oh, gosh.
Parking at 30 minutes.
No.
All right, great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll vote on this. It's the second reading, so we need to do roll call vote. Please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Victoria?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. The next item is a review of the process for review of large grant requests.
This resolution is a follow-up to the council discussion on September 8. As the council is aware, earlier this year, you approved a, a small community grant program, and that would basically allow community groups, neighborhood associations, to apply for grants for $2,500 or less. At that time, the council also had considerable discussion about trying to develop a more formal, formal process for groups that are seeking larger amounts of funding. So what is before the council this evening is a resolution that would establish a process for council review of funding requests for over $2,500, as described in the agenda materials. Proposals would be due in December with council review of applications in January. Unlike the small community grants program where the council is setting aside a certain amount of funding in the budget, this would basically not be a specific award by the council in January, but merely a process to give me guidance in terms of developing my recommended budget for the next fiscal year. And obviously, everything would be contingent on availability of funding. But it's just a way for the council to at least annually review those organizations to which you have historically given funding. Under this proposal, nothing would be automatic. So those community groups that have historically received funding, such as the Old Tacoma Business Association, the Independence Day Committee, essentially would have to reapply for funding each and every year. And this would also give the council the opportunity to weigh funding for those organizations against perhaps other city priorities, and also provide a mechanism where you could get feedback from those organizations on what they have done with the funding the city provided in the previous year.
Moving ordinance?
Second.
Move by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember Snapper. Comments? Councilmember Robinson?
Would we still have the leeway to say, well, we feel like giving them a certain amount of money for a two-year period or some other period of time?
Yes. I mean, every year, I think you could do that. Obviously, no one probably would have predicted a year ago that we would have taken a $600,000 hit from the state. So probably before I would assume that that funding is established, we would probably revisit it every year just based on the city's current fiscal condition. And I would want to, I guess, reconfirm the council's direction. But you would certainly have that discretion if you wanted. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you.
Second by Councilmember Wright?
You put forth a calendar for FY 2011. I assume every year we would publish the calendar to some date?
Yes.
Is that articulated in here, the time, the time by when, when we would publish the calendar? Like, do we want to make the rule that it would be the third week of November or something like that?
You could certainly do that if you'd like.
This might be good, because sometimes these things get forgotten about. So it might be a good thing to codify, particularly if we're gonna, you know, like, December 18. Maybe it should be even earlier. Right? Because you want to make sure people know the timeframe by which they have to get the application in.
Yeah, I think that's fine. If the council would prefer to set specific dates within the, the document itself, I think that's perfectly appropriate if you'd like to do that.
I just think, I'm totally up to you guys leaving, setting the calendar. I just think we should have some date by which it's agreed that the calendar is set each year.
Yeah. From a practical standpoint, we would need to set the calendar so that you were giving guidance to me during the month of January. Because obviously, especially given the dollar amount of some of these funding requests, it would be important for me to have that as I'm discussing the department's budget request.
Setting the calendar could be October 1.
Right.
And then that's also the, is the, does that set the reminder for anybody who's kind of reapply to make sure that they're getting their ducks in order to do that? Or anybody who might be interested? So that some, it kind of ties notice going out in the newsletter or whatever, saying, you know, don't forget there's this process.
I think you could do it as early as you want. From a practical standpoint, the later you can get closer to when we're actually adopting the budget. We probably will be in a position to have a better sense of what the available resources may be.
Right. But, but in terms of anybody wanting to get their application in in December and knowing what the timeframes are, it needs to happen in the fall.
Yeah, that's fine.
What, what needs to happen in the fall?
Setting of, setting of the calendar and, and notice.
So it's, we're talking about the setting of the calendar in October? Saying in October, we'll say when the deadline is?
That's correct.
This, this deadline is a week before the holiday, the Christmas?
Right.
And I guess my, I'm assuming that staff has enough time to evaluate the different requests in the last half of December, so that you're ready to put them in a state for us to look at in January?
Yeah, I think what was actually envisioned is more that we would gather the information in December. Historically, the council has been on recess during the month of December. They would really be compiling the information and being in a position to present it to the council when you return from recess in the month of January. So there wouldn't be that much review, actually. Councilmember Robinson, that would probably be needed on our part.
My point was that, just to make sure that, that you've got enough time to review them. And I'm assuming that you put it in there, thinking, having that in mind. So I was a little confused about what this October date was, but now I'm clearer that it's just when we say what the deadline is.
Right.
Okay.
So would you like to add to the reservation itself that something like the calendar for, the calendar shall be published each year, by the staff each year by October 1? Or shall be published by October 1 of each year?
Councilmembers?
I don't really think we need to, this seems like micromanaging to me. I mean, I don't, I think, I trust the city manager to set, to announce the schedule when, with enough advance notice. I don't think we need to put it in, codify it in the ordinance.
I guess all I was thinking of was to make sure that there's always public notice in someplace like the newsletter to remind organizations, so that we don't get organizations who in January go, oh, we totally forgot.
Right.
And then they come in, and then we don't have our process.
I, I, I'm just saying I trust the city manager to be cognizant of those issues. I don't think it needs to be in the ordinance.
We're just thinking about...
That would cost the next city manager.
Yeah, that's, that's my thought. The next city manager might go, I never knew I was supposed to do that. Any other comments on adding a section to say that it's published by October 1?
I would just agree with you.
Okay. So it sounds like a, who were the movers and seconders? Do we have a friendly amendment or not?
By Snapper. Motion made.
So it sounds like it was okay with the mover?
It's not a...
Not okay with the secondary? Therefore, therefore, would somebody like to make a formal amendment? Offer a formal amendment?
To move it as the city clerk has written, read it to us.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One no. Okay. So we now have the resolution as amended. Any further comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Passes unanimously. We now move to work session, and the first item is a report from the Ethics Commission. And Emma Schabacher is here.
Yes.
Welcome. Chair of the Ethics Commission.
Yes. I had, do you have two of my colleagues here as well?
If they'd like to come up?
If, if they want to. That's Bob Anderson and Patricia Murphy. Just want to...
You're welcome to come sit at the table.
Feel lonely up here? Lost his face.
Yeah.
Stares on either side. So you get for showing up.
So if you want to go through your report?
Yes. I hope that you've all had a chance to look at it. I tried to get it in advance. It just, I'll give you a very brief overview, and then if anyone has questions, we'd be happy to, to answer them. We have six members right now. I think we have seven possible slots, so we still have one vacancy that could be filled. We met four times this year, as I believe we're required to. We issued one advisory opinion that had numerous subparts to it, so it actually included a lot of issues, but it was issued as one omnibus opinion. And then as well, we responded in the spring to, to a request from the city attorney to, we were invited to comment on some changes to the ordinance, and so we did that. And that's kind of an overview of what we did in this past year.
Councilmember Snapper?
Thank you very much for the report and for serving on the Ethics Commission. This, this year is a good example of why it's important to have one. Occasionally, I know it's not a real active area, but occasionally we have stuff that's really quite critical. We need, we need advice from the Ethics Commission. It's a very complicated area. I work for the federal government, my day job, and so I have a whole set of ethics rules for that. And then I have a whole different set of ethics rules for Tacoma Park. And it's made me aware of how much precision you need to have in those rules and people to help you interpret those rules. So I'm very glad that the committee takes, the commission takes this seriously. I do have one very small sort of question. On the back, looking, in the looking forward section, you say, you observe the section that says that the commission shall, to the extent practicable, publish its advisory opinions, et cetera. And, but it's silent on what publish means. I wonder if the city might consider putting something on the web. You, of course, would have to preserve confidentiality, privacy, and so on, as necessary. But something along the lines of what you have here, or an abbreviated version of that, I think would be very helpful, because it does let the citizens know that we are trying to pay attention to these issues. They are very important. So I think maybe putting it up quarterly or once a year, or whatever seems the right frequency. I'm, I'm in favor of more often, but on the other hand, I don't want too much work either.
So are you saying publish the opinions on the...
Yes. Or, or if that doesn't seem reasonable, perhaps putting a short summary and indicating that the full, you know, someone could get the full, the full thing if they wanted it. So at least people were notified that there was action occurring.
Because currently, you just file them with the city clerk?
The way...
But technically, they're public?
I believe technically, they are public. And I think we've had three opinions that we've issued since I've been the chair. And what I've done is give them to Jesse, and then Jesse passes them on to whoever the councilperson who made the request was. And I believe that that is where it stops. So there, you know, there isn't really a publication, per se, of the opinion. I believe it is public, in that if somebody wanted to see it, they could go to Jesse and ask to see it. But I don't think there's any notice given to the community that such an opinion exists. You know, so I don't know if anyone would know to go ask for an opinion that they don't know exists, so.
Do we have a sense of what any other jurisdictions do about this question?
I don't.
No doubt.
Does anybody know what the federal government does? Or some other, you know, state government, whoever?
Well, I, I know that in the federal government, OGE, the Office of Government Ethics, does have a database where you can search some of their opinions. I don't know, you know, how the decision is made, what decision. I think those are just the decisions that are issued by the Office of Government Ethics. You know, ethics, opinions issued within the agency wouldn't go there. But the, the OGE office does have a searchable database.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And it just occurs to me, as we were talking about this, two things. One is that advisory opinions may be a little bit different from complaints. And the publication of those reports might be different. And I think it's something that would be interesting to look at what other jurisdictions do, and, and have some time to get feedback from the committee and the city attorney and some others. But I would certainly support us looking at making a change like that to the Regulations for the Ethics Committee. I think also that, since I was the subject of the multipart or multifaceted advisory opinion that you issued, as we went through that process, I, I saw some things that I thought we should consider, changes that we should consider making to the, just the process of how things are done. And I appreciate the work that you put in on that. I know that, as you said, there was a, there was more than one issue on, that I put on the table at the same time. And I know that made your life more difficult. And I appreciate the time that you put into that. And I found the, the opinion that came back was very helpful to me. You know, in the past, I looked at my involvement in different activities and said, well, you know, do I stand to benefit from it or not, you know, from the relationship? And, you know, your, your opinion that you came back with showed that there's much more complex considerations than just my personal benefit from something. But anyways, I would like to suggest that, that during the, the next council term, that the, the council, the committee, or the commission work together to look at revising the, and improving your governing rules, and so that we can kind of move to the next level now. And I think that the publication of, of opinions is one of the things that should be considered. I know that, you know, the Ethics Commission a couple of years ago went through and made a revision to it. But I think it's, I think there's still room for improvement. And I think, I'm sure that you all have opinions about things that you would like to see different in it. And I think Councilmember Snapper's made a very good suggestion. But I think we can't just do it quickly, because I think there could be ramifications. So right off the top of my head, I think, well, would people, would councilmembers be reluctant to ask for an advisory opinion if they... ask for an advisory opinion if they knew that the results were going to be published? You know, basically asking for the advisory opinion so that they can correct their ways if they're not going right, or they're, you know, don't make a mistake if they're asking for the advice beforehand, but it might, you know, the publication might be better for complaint-oriented opinions. Just, and that's just all off the top of my head, you know, following councilmember Snippers' suggestion. Again, I suggested the council look at that, the whole ordinance, and see if we can improve it. Thank you.
Yeah, if I can just add, my reaction when I saw the question of about, well, we have a supposedly public document that's supposed to be published, but the way the process is set up, mostly people don't know about it, and so it's, it's not what we say it is, and so therefore we have to get everything in alignment and with an eye toward as much openness as we can do, given what's involved in the process. So I think it does require some more work and thought by the council and thought by the commission on it. And I think it would be a good idea to have a little bit of research done about how some other people deal with this and some taking up of those questions by the commission, and then probably scheduling a time for the commission to come back and work with the council to refine this process. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you for all your work that you do. It's very nice. I do think that things that are complaints should be published in a more proactive way than people having to figure out that something has happened and then go ask the city clerk about it. I think that if we were going to publish the advisory rulings, that it would cause the very effect that councilmember Siemens was talking about. So we'd either have to have a kind of a separate advise and consult process, like that was more private, maybe with the city attorney, although I think actually we could probably do that now if we really wanted to. But, you know, what might be useful is, in an advisory opinion, is to strip the identifiers out of it because you can provide the basic principles of the advice and the, and, you know, develop a scenario that doesn't say, hey, talking about this particular, you know, person and this particular incident, and, you know, these community members or family members, you know, specific people that it relates to in this, in this way.
That's what the, actually, that's what the court says.
Yeah, that's what councilmember Snippers said also, was, you know, said, look, this format that you put in here, which is not, you know, the whole text of the opinion, but...
In the report.
Yeah, in the format where, you know, you have a sense of what, what happened. But you could actually probably publish a little bit more even than is here, so you get...
So that it's instructive to whoever might be wondering the same question and not have to go through the whole process.
Right, yeah. And without it being sort of personally identifying. And I think that that would be really useful to know, from my perspective, I would actually find it interesting and useful to know what challenges people have faced before. I've been a councilmember for four years and have had a couple of interesting dilemmas come up that I essentially just worked through myself, but I think, yeah, absolutely, it would be, it would be useful to have that. And in some senses, it would be useful for the council, councilmembers who run across these kind of interesting challenges, to actually give them to the Ethics Commission so you could toss them around and give feedback and then have, have some record of that, then that would also help people who came after me. I would find that useful.
Yeah, just a few things. First is, right now, the language about, you know, publishing the opinion with redacting the identity to the extent practicable. As I read it, that, that language applies to both advisory opinions and opinions that the commission issues in response to complaints, which are, you know, two different mechanisms by which we can essentially issue an opinion. One, the advisory opinion mechanism is when one of you or someone else who's covered by the ordinance comes to us with a question. And then the complaint process is when, you know, an outside, a different party who's not, you know, is making a, you know, complaint against somebody who they feel has acted inappropriately under the ordinance. And the language about publication, I think, applies, it definitely applies to the advisory opinion. We haven't actually had a complaint since I've been involved. But when we do write, and when we write an advisory opinion, we do write it with an eye towards redacting, you know, in a way that it will be as easy as possible to redact somewhere down the line. But not all identifying information can be taken out just because it's, you know, it's a small enough community and the, you know, the links are such that you can usually kind of trace who it is through that. But we do try to make it as redactable and clean as possible. And we'd be very happy to, you know, do whatever it is the council wants us to do in terms of coming up with suggestions or approaches.
Ms. Robertson?
I remember an ethics class in law school, and I remember the case study atmosphere that was in place in law school and how we responded to questions that the teacher posed to us, you know. If, if someone did such and such, and these were the ethics rules, how would it, how would these rules apply to this situation? Kind of like a frequently asked question in today's web world. So we might think about that in going forward and so that, so that areas could be covered beyond just those things that had been asked about in an advisory capacity of you. So I just encourage you to think about the ethics rules that we have now and how that might be as a kind of an educational tool, even if there's not a specific advisory opinion that's been asked.
Thank you, Mayor, for the second shot. I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we've talked about the publication quite a bit tonight, but I think there are other opportunities for improving the ordinance, and I'm sure that you all see that better than I do. And so I think if you keep that in mind as we move forward, hopefully whoever is mayor next term will be putting that on the, on the schedule so that we can revisit the ordinance and see how we can improve it.
Any other comments or questions? Anything else that you want to talk about?
Any questions, and we look forward to continuing to us with you all.
Likewise.
Thanks.
Thank you all very much. And we'll move to our next item, which is the COLTA proposed code amendments. You all would like to come forward? Evening. Good evening. You've got with us the COLTA executive director, Ken Segal, and Moses Wild, and Jack Smith, and all of you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to.
Sure. The, we're here to respond to some issues that were raised when COLTA made its report to the council this summer. In addition to some issues that were discussed at the council meeting, Moses went back to the commissioners who weren't at the meeting and asked if they had any concerns that, with the COLTA process, that they wanted us to address or wanted you to address. So we touched on a few more issues. The first issue is illegal entry, and one councilmember had reported having a problem or hearing of a problem with one of his residents where the tenant or the residence landlord derived a pair of property without giving proper notice, actually with a code enforcement officer to do a code inspection. That code enforcement officer, and I think the plan is to formally advise the code enforcement office that they are subject to the notice requirements. Landlords, whether or without a code enforcement officer, have to provide 48 hours' notice prior to entering a tenant's unit unless the tenant has requested some repairs, and then they, if they're promptly responding to those requests, they can go ahead and enter the unit without advanced notice. In the experience of the housing office and COLTA, improper entry is not a frequent problem with landlords. Sometimes a landlord will not be aware of the notice requirements on her property, but once they're advised, they typically, we don't have a problem with landlords. More common is problems with tenants who make complaints to their landlord or make complaints to code enforcement, but then won't let the landlord or code enforcement officer enter when they arrive at the property. So we don't feel it's necessary to impose more penalties or more laws protecting tenants from illegal entry. We think it's, the best approach is just to make sure that landlords and enforcement officers are aware of the requirements. The next issue that's upon is that commissions subpoenas, and the problem that we're all aware of from, from dealing with COLTA proceedings is that it's with the overzealous use of the commission's subpoena process. People want four different witnesses to prove something that's already documented in the record. People want police officers to testify, doctors to testify about facts that often aren't relevant to the proceeding. So we propose some amendments to the subpoena process that will make it easier for COLTA to initially deny subpoena requests, and then, once it conducts the hearing, sees what's, what evidence is in the case, what facts are relevant. We can determine whether the person, the person who subpoenaed their testimony or puts documents, if the documents are actually necessary for COLTA to decide the case before, before issuing a subpoena. Some COLTA commissioners have expressed doubt as to whether the commission can enforce subpoenas. It's, I'm not aware of any case where we've issued a subpoena that wasn't honored, where we felt we needed the witness or the, or the documents subpoenaed. But to ensure that if we come to that point, if we feel like we need something and somebody's not responding to subpoena, I think it would, would help if we had something in the code expressly authorizing the city to go to court to enforce a subpoena issued by the commission. I don't see that as something that's going to come up often, but it would be a helpful tool if it came down to that. The last issue, and I don't believe this was raised at the hearing, but some commissioners are concerned about enforcement of COLTA orders. Sometimes a landlord will have, it's called a defective tenancy, some condition on their property that, that doesn't conform to code. And they'll, and the commission will say, you have to fix this, and, and nothing happens. And I guess that we have seen this on occasion. It's, there probably, I could count on one hand, the landlords that don't comply with orders, but, you know, we probably see that more than, than the rest of the landlords in the city. And the problem typically stems from the financial condition of the landlord. They're just not able to comply with COLTA orders. Or sometimes we've got one landlord who is always difficult to locate and his properties are in various states of receivership, and, and he often does not comply with COLTA orders. However, I don't believe that we need more laws on the books to, to enforce the COLTA orders. I think there's enough in the books or that would, enough things that COLTA can do to encourage landlords to comply. For example, one practice is to, if I find a defective tenancy in a condition that's continuing at the property, we'll say, you know, this reduces the value of your tenancy by X dollars. Until you repair the defact, the tenant's going to be able to deduct this amount from their rent. So there is a financial incentive for them to improve. But I don't believe that adding more laws to the books to, to gain landlords' compliance is necessary. I think there are certain landlords that just are very difficult to deal with.
Does, do you have anything you want to add?
I would just like to say, I think that Ken has summed up all the issues that I discussed with the fellow commissioners. But right now, if we can get these issues with the subpoena in the code, I mean, that would be very helpful for the commission.
You agree?
No, sir. Nothing from my end tonight.
Okay. Yes, you had your big chance last time. Correct. Councilwoman Clark, any questions? Ms. Robertson?
I just want to be, I want to tell you what I heard and see if I'm right, to be clear on what it is that we're seeing here. You, you're feeling that the 48-hour rule is on, is it on the books now and you need to make landlords and tenants more aware of it? So you're taking that on as a task yourself? Did I hear that correct? Correctly?
Correct. The, the, the plan is, and per se, Moses is taking on the task of putting a notice in the, in, I'm not sure what our communications office has with the landlords, but certainly we give an annual notice of rent increase, which everyone opens, and adding a flyer in there about the notice requirements.
Okay.
So, sir, just a kind of jog there, there, maybe on...
Okay.
As to what the actual law is. Something very simple.
All right. I'm clear on that one.
Okay.
Thought that's what I heard. I was right. You do want to change the law to give you more power to deny initial subpoenas. So if somebody says, oh, I want my doctor, my doctor here, and you feel that it's not necessary, you want the authority to say, well, we're not going to honor that subpoena. Do I have that right? Correct.
Honor that request for subpoena.
A request for a subpoena. So if someone comes to you and says, I want you to subpoena my doctor because they have special information, you can evaluate that request and deny it if you choose, and you want to put that in the doc, you want to put that in the law?
Right. It would be a regulation. That, that wouldn't require a code change.
Okay. You just jumped over my understanding, but I take it? That sounds...
It's a regulation.
A subpoena regulation. Okay. Got it. You talked about enforceability in court, and that is for subpoenas that you, that you decide you will honor.
That will, that will issue. People submit subpoena requests, they say.
Okay. They submit a subpoena request to you, you then issue a subpoena. Do I have it right?
Yes.
And you want to make sure that your subpoenas are enforceable in court? Is that... Is that...do I have it right there?
Right.
And I know I'm trying to simplify this down, but I'm just trying to get it so that I can say these words and understand what I'm hearing.
Right. If someone won't listen to a COLTA subpoena, we want to be able to go to the circuit court and say, "Order this person to comply..."
Okay.
"...with the commission subpoena."
Got it. Then you talked about landlords who are, because of their financial condition, aren't complying, and you had one or two in mind, particular problem landlords. And you said that a possible solution would be to allow tenants to reduce the amount of rent that they're paying to the landlord and make up for the deficiency for that, let's say, particular unit. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
And do you need to make a change in order to allow that?
No.
So that's something...that's a strategy that you intend to follow?
That's a strategy that's currently being employed.
Okay. It's a strategy that's currently being employed, and you told us about it for our own understanding.
Yes. The question was raised, do we need to do anything to help us enforce COLTA orders?
So you considered it, and you felt that the strategy you're currently following is adequate?
Yes.
Okay. And I think, unless I'm missing something, that's what I heard.
That's it.
Okay, good.
Counselor Robinson. So just first on the issue of giving more leeway to the commission to deny subpoena. You know, the idea...let me first make sure I understand a subpoena right. So if someone comes and says, "I want to subpoena this person because I think they...I want them to testify in my case," right?
Right.
So then there's this presumption that you guys will know what the person's going to testify and will say, "Well, we don't need that." But how can you actually know what the person's going to say or the evidence that they're going to...that's going to come up when the person's actually in the hearing testifying?
I mean, it often, to some degree, it's apparent from the identity of the person whom they're trying to subpoena. Sometimes it's apparent from the documents they list that they're trying to subpoena. But it's...I mean, it's not a perfect process, but in our experience, nine times out of 10, people are requesting subpoenas for information that the commission doesn't need. And it's just...the commission doesn't want to be issuing subpoenas to doctors. We've had subpoenas requested for the police chief. We don't want to kind of drag people in for no reason. So once we've had the hearing...I mean, oftentimes, people subpoena...issue subpoenas requesting information that even without that information, the commission is already ready to rule in their favor. Therefore, we know there's no need to issue that subpoena. So, you know, on occasion, there could be a time where we get to the hearing, we realize we do need this information. The commission can make that decision based on everything that's in the record, and then we might hold the case open to receive more evidence. So it's not...you know, we can't...we're not always going to be right that we don't need something, but in our experience, that has been the case.
The other guess is my concern is that pragmatically, I think what you're describing makes a lot of sense, but there is going to be that case, I don't know if it's one out of 10 or one out of 100, where you deny someone a subpoena. You even decide that once you are looking at the evidence that exists, you don't want to serve the subpoena. And maybe that actually is useful to the person's case. And so I guess I would ask the question of, are we in danger that someone could appeal a ruling because they would claim...I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but some sort of due process issue, or do other courts deny subpoenas or other judicial bodies deny subpoenas based on just the opinions or the choice of the commissioners or judges?
Well, I mean, courts actually allow attorneys to issue subpoenas on behalf of the court, I guess trusting the discretion of the attorney. When you're in court and somebody doesn't honor a subpoena, typically what happens is the court will ask for a proffer of what the evidence would be and will decide whether to, you know, to continue the case, make sure the person honors the subpoena. Other times, it'll proceed without the person. So it's a...I mean, it's similar to the process that we're proposing.
I guess I still...I'm not sure how, because I'm not 100% sure I'm comfortable with giving the additional leeway. I think that probably 99% of the time, you get it right, but I'm concerned about the 1% of the time you get it wrong and what that means for people. The second question is, there's this question of whether your subpoenas are abided by or obeyed, right? And it sounds like...I just wanted to clarify something. Is it that they're almost always obeyed or that they're always obeyed when it matters, in your opinion? Because I heard...
I guess it would be fair to say that they're almost always obeyed when it matters. Typically, the parties are in possession of all the evidence that we need, where the case file contains.
So a doctor might not show up, but you have the report, and you don't...and he doesn't obey the subpoena, but you just say, "Well, we don't need the...we don't...the rule, we don't need to have him obey the subpoena."
Right. Or sometimes...or the medical issue might not even be relevant to what the commission has to decide.
Okay. And then lastly, just in terms of getting compliance, maybe not a new law, but do we need to...or do we have the authority to change the fine for the landlord if they're not complying? And maybe I wonder when the last time the fine was adjusted and whether we might think about maybe the fine should be steeper? Because I agree with you that maybe it's not a financial issue, but often, ultimately, you know, when the fine gets higher, action actually gets taken. So I guess there's two questions. Or one is, do we have the authority to increase the fine? And the second is, do you think that that would help with compliance?
Compliance with the order to make repairs?
Yeah.
I mean, I think there are fines associated with the code violations that usually underlie the defective tenancy, and there is a fine for not complying with the COLTA order. I mean, I'm...
What is the fine now?
I'm not sure what the fine would be.
I think the fine to comply with the COLTA order is a Class C. I think that's around $250, I think. Now, we could certainly, if you recommend that we look at increasing that to like a Class A, which would be like $500, $1,000.
I'd just be curious, like, what the fine is. It may be...the fine might not be enough to incentivize the landlord to make the change, right? And pain...financial pain will make them rectify the issue for the tenant. So I'd be curious to know at least what the fine is, when the last time it was adjusted. Because maybe $250, you know, it was $250 15 years ago, and that was like a bigger chunk of the rent, and now it's a smaller chunk of the rent, and, you know, it's less pain...less financial pain, which means less compliance. I just asked the questions, and we want some more information to consider whether we should increase the fine. Thank you.
Counselor Member Simmons and Counselor Robinson. And for what it's worth, my recollection is that the municipal infractions were revised on the order of 10 years ago?
It predates me, so it goes back at least more than five years.
This is old enough for now. I thank you all for coming back and following up on these two issues that we brought up the last time we were here. I think Counselor Member Wright covered the subpoena question thoroughly. I would like to focus on the other issue, the 48-hour notice. As I understand, what you're saying is that the incidence of complaints for landlords not giving 48 hours' notice is very few, and that you feel that maybe increased notification to the landlords would take care of those problems. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Are you familiar with the fact that the county, whenever the county comes out to do an inspection, their letter says, notifies the landlords that they have to give 48-hour notice to the tenants?
Yes.
And in fact, the incident that Mr. Sigmund related, where the police came out to help gain access to the apartment without the 48-hour notice, was with a county inspector, and so they had received a letter saying that the 48-hour notice is required. So I'm not sure that notice is resolving the problem, but the number of occurrences...you're saying that you get very few complaints of that. I get complaints about it, and so I think maybe what needs to happen is that we need to make sure that also the tenants know what their rights are and that they know what the remedy is, is to file a complaint with COLTA if they're not getting adequate notice. And so I would ask that maybe it isn't the landlords who need to be educated, but it's the tenants who need better education on what their rights are and what their remedy is, so that they can come to you with the complaints if the 48-hour notice is not being adhered to. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It does make sense, Counselor Robinson. Just let me add something here now. As you know, if the tenant asks that the necessary repair be made, the landlord may make the entry without any...without the 48-hour notice. You are familiar with that, right?
I'm familiar that if it's an emergency-type of repair...
It doesn't have to be an emergency. If the tenant has asked for the landlord to come in, or the landlord's agent, the landlord may make that entry without giving a 48-hour notice, as long as it's done within two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good. It's somewhat different than what I had heard from your department, but I'll certainly trust that you know that better than I do. And then I guess the other thing, as you said, there was no need to change, to add more teeth to the law, because we don't get many incidences of this. But what if it's only one incidence or one landlord that does it repeatedly? How do we resolve that?
I mean, I think we could take enforcement action under the existing code against a problem landlord.
Okay. And I think that was the question to begin with, is what remedy do we have? What actions can we take against a landlord who does continually ignores the 48-hour notice requirement?
If the landlord could be prosecuted for a municipal infraction.
So there is...there are penalties for that now, and he could be fined for that?
Yes.
I'll thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
It's unfortunate that we have laws about this. It just seems like such a matter of common courtesy to call somebody before you enter their private residence. I think that with the notice part, if the law actually says that they can enter anytime after someone asks for a request, maybe we should change that, because I don't see a reason for a landlord to enter with no notice unless it's an emergency. I have a house in College Park, and the guys will call me and ask me to...they've asked me to change light bulbs for them and interesting things. But regardless of what it is they asked me to come and do, even if I'm going to come and trim a hedge, I call them to let them know and to make sure that...I always give them the opportunity to be there when I'm going to be there, which I think, you know, is also common courtesy. It's my house, but it's their home. So I would actually support changing the law that way. I find 48 hours a little difficult. 24, I think, is more reasonable if they've called me and asked me to make a change. But I also don't have any trouble interacting with them and coming to agreement about when I'll come over, so...because we don't have a combative relationship. I hope that's because I'm not a jerky landlord. The other thing that I wanted to say is that if you get an agreement from COLTA, a decision that a repair has to be made, and the landlord doesn't make it, can the tenant do a repair and deduct? Can they, you know, call the company to come out and fix the heater and then deduct it? If you've already got a decision on paper that says this needs to happen, you can still fine the landlord the $250, but if you want to have your heater fixed, and your landlord is a jerk and doesn't care about paying the $250 because they have some crazy vendetta against you or something, can you repair and deduct?
The commission can authorize that, and we have when people have asked for it. Sometimes it doesn't appear to be in the tenant's best interest to make major expenditures.
I was just going to ask, is like, how big are the expenditures? I mean, typical rent in Tacoma Park is what, $700 or $800?
Right.
Are the repairs that come to COLTA, like, in the tens of thousands of dollars? Like, there's a gaping hole in my roof and rain and snow is coming?
I think we've had a building where the furnace didn't work.
So it's the furnace for the whole building? And I imagine we have a lot of those, where we have common utilities, where a common utility is the problem.
Right. And I mean, another problem is sometimes a tenant may have an award based on, you know, kind of past damages. Their heater didn't work all winter. The landlord owes them $2,000 in back rent. Well, they're allowed to deduct that from future rent. And, you know, if you start filing on too many things that need to be deducted from future rent, the greater the risk that the tenant's not going to recoup their damages and money they put into the property.
Well, in California, we had a guy in...somewhere in Los Angeles who was known as a slumlord. He had rats in his building. He would never fix anything. Finally, the court sentenced him to live in his building for a year, which I thought was pretty funny. But they, you know, they will put people in jail for not fixing things like heat and, you know, essential habitability issues: heat, water, a roof that doesn't have a hole in it. Do they do that in Maryland?
I believe...I know that we've had one property owner put in jail for not making repairs, but it's certainly not a quick or easy process to do that. That didn't involve a tenant. It wasn't a landlord issue, but ultimately, it could come to that.
Okay. It just seems to me like if you're going to be a landlord, you're entering into a special kind of a business, and you have to take care to fix those sorts of things. It's not a restaurant where people can choose not to go in and eat dinner at your restaurant. It's a house, and there's...it's somebody's home, and there's a different level of responsibility for that. And so I think if it means that we have to increase the fees or we have to be more aggressive about how we approach that...keeping in mind that I don't think that the majority of landlords act as well. I imagine that it's a very small and recalcitrant group that would end up at that point. But I would support that, and I would support what you wanted to...how you wanted to rewrite the rules to be able to do that more aggressively.
Counselor Robinson.
Sorry, just going to go back to this 48-hour notification. I believe Counselor Member Siemens and I... I believe Councilmember Siemens and I are concerned about the same case, and as I understand it, it was not about a specific repair, it was about a re-inspection about a health violation.
As according to the hotel.
Right. So, and so if the tenant has requested a county inspection, does that mean they have waived their 48-hour? They're not making an entrance to make a repair in that case. They were coming with an inspector, so that should not be the same situation, should it?
It should not, I don't think. The code is very clear, something the tenant has asked for. It's a necessary repair the tenant has asked for. And that would not be, that would...
That would not be an inspection.
Right.
Okay. And I believe, again, this is a case where a tenant has had repeated complaints. I've seen the letters that are duly noted that say, "You're supposed to give 48 hours' notice, here's your reminder that you violated that," but there doesn't seem to be any follow-up, and it seems to keep happening, so.
I don't know what to say on this one, Councilmember, except that this is a rather unique circumstance. I'll leave it at that, if I may, in this forum. But if you look at the record, Grandma used to have three sides to every story, and you heard perhaps one side. The other two sides would give you a slightly different view on what you may have been told.
I understand that.
Sure.
And we've discussed it, too. I just, as far as this 48-hour rule, we don't seem to be fining landlords or in any way making them come to heel on it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not certain that that's necessarily correct, Councilmember. We don't have that many to start with. The ones that do, with rare exception, once they call us or once we call them, that's usually the end of them. Now, there are some, but in, in this particular instance, you're dealing with a, a litany of issues between a particular landlord and a particular tenant.
So you're saying this is a unique situation?
I would certainly, I would certainly describe it like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So what may be unique about this case, do you think, could be that the tenant is persistent and continues to come back after the situation not being resolved? Whereas other tenants may just...
No, I don't, Councilmember, is my answer. No, I don't think it's that. I think we're dealing with a, with a particular tenant who's had a particular history with this landlord and with other landlords.
Okay. If the tenant requests repairs, then there is no 48-hour notice. What if the landlord wants to gain access to the apartment, say, to turn on the heat for the winter, upcoming winter? Do they have to give 48 hours' notice?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if the same landlord has just entered the apartment to do that without proper 48-hour notice, would you say that, again, is a problem with the tenant or a problem with the landlord?
No, it's clearly with the, as I indicated, I'm not, I'm not taking sides with...
I will tell her then to file her complaint and see how it's followed up on. Thank you.
Other questions?
Comments? It sounds like there's some agreement on the, on the points that you all have made in the, in the memo, but it sounds like there are remaining questions about whether that we might consider either changing the scale of fines in general or advancing a particular instance to a, changing the class of fine to a higher level of fine. And I guess I would recommend that when anything comes back to us, that we have some recommendation there from COLTA or the city manager in terms of the good fines. And so I think the only remaining thing that we need to clarify is the questions that have come up about the 48-hour notification. And I guess I would look to my colleagues to see where, where we want to give direction, how we want to give direction on this for their proceeding. That's my opinion.
I would like to propose that in Section 16-140, Item A, Number 2, where it says that if a tenant has requested repairs, the landlord may enter the rental unit to make such repairs without written notice if the repairs take place within two weeks of the tenant's request. And I would suggest that we add in there with at least 24 hours of notice. It's ridiculous to think that a landlord could just walk into an apartment to effect repairs without some kind of notice to the tenant.
Maybe that notice could be by phone. It doesn't have to be written.
Yeah, I was going to say, your recommendation did not include written, it just said notice.
That's correct.
Okay.
And is there any exception to that if there's an emergency situation?
Well, that's covered in a different section.
Okay. Is there general agreement on that post-change?
Is this, is this what, do you have an opinion, an opinion on that?
Well, I would recommend that you put it written in there. If you leave it open, then you're going to have all kinds of battles between I did call, I didn't call, I emailed, I talked to her. My suggestion would be to add the word written if you're going to recommend this, this change, which gets us back to where the county is now. You understand that the county rule is 24 hours, and I'm not sure that putting 24 into our law, into the city law, is going to lead to more confusion or not. But if you, whatever you decide to go with, if you do go with that, it should be written notice. I would strongly recommend that.
The county rule is 24 hours...
24 hours prior notice.
Blanket for situations?
Yeah.
As opposed to our 48 hours?
I think, I think that the county rule is 24 hours written notice.
No matter what?
Now, don't hold me to that. I don't read the county rule every day, but I know that it is 24 hours.
Okay. And, and in this instance where they have requested a repair, the county rule would be 24-hour written notice?
Could be.
If it's, if it's the default for the state, then yes, I believe, it's, even if you requested the repair, you have to give 24 hours' notice. The only exception to that, I believe, is an emergency, so the water main breaks, you can enter the house and protect your property.
It sounds like...
It's burning down, you can enter the house. You don't want to then, but you could.
It's, all right, Councilmember, you have a second?
One concern I have is that having myself wrestled with getting plumbers or electricians or someone like that scheduled and into my house at the time that they agree and so on, it seems like if we were to write such a rule, it would be helpful, I think, to have some way of adjusting it for things outside the landlord's control, like the issue that the guy said, "Yes, I know I said I was going to be there Tuesday afternoon, but it'll have to be Wednesday afternoon or something." And then does that mean you have to scurry around and get another 24 hours' notice? If there was some way of having a conversation with the tenant that said, "Okay, well, if you're not going to do it Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday morning's okay," seems like that would be a little better. I don't know exactly how you'd implement that, but...
Maybe we could come up with a way to give the tenants the chance to waive their notice.
That's right. Give the chance, the chance to waive.
There you go.
Yes.
When they've asked for it, or under any circumstances.
But is the, is the point...
I would think when they've asked, when they've asked for it.
Yeah, the point here, where we, where this started was a tenant calls the landlord and says, "My faucet's dripping." And the, and in kind of a similar situation, that the landlord is capable of fixing a dripping faucet. He happens to be downstairs. He gets the call. Can he say, "Well, I'm in the building now, can I come up and fix the faucet?" Or does he have to say, "Hold on, I'll give you a 24-hour written notice, and in the event that I'm in the area tomorrow, I'll come by and fix the faucet." Is that kind of, is that what we're talking about?
I think, I think that's what we're talking about. I think it isn't, I see nothing wrong with this landlord calling and saying, "Hey, do you mind if I stop in now and fix it?" But the idea that I'm, the landlord's saying, "I'm coming up now and fixing it, you know, let me in, and I don't care if you're in the shower," is a completely different set, you know?
Okay, so it's a notice unless it's a wa, a waivable notice, but waivable by the...
By the tenant.
By the tenant. And so if, in that case, if the landlord, if the tenant call, has the landlord's number, calls him up, then is an oral waiving, a waiver is adequate? Or does the landlord have to write the note, and then the, then the waiver has to be done in writing at that moment? I'm just trying to get this, you know?
If we're going to written notice, my feeling is it's got to, it's got to be, there's a place to, to, you know, initial the waiver that says, "I waived." Otherwise, you're still up into trouble.
You're still up in trouble.
Maybe the, can the landlord just have a pad and say, "Call, you know, can you fix my faucet? I'll be right up, okay? Okay." He gets to the door and says, "Can you just initial this saying that it's over, that okay that I come in?" Would that solve all this, instead of having to? I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about too many laws and too much nitpicking here is my...
I mean, to, to, to go back to where we started, as egregious as, you know, some of these illegal entry situations can be, you know, 99% of the time, the problem is a tenant can't get their landlord to fix something sufficient enough. And our initial thinking was that we don't want to address this rare problem by making it much harder, right, to get things repaired.
Councilmember Clay?
I find it hard to imagine that we need to have language around this, quite frankly. I only have one unit. When I was a kid, my father had four units. We, we managed this with the landlord and the tenant relationship without problems. I have to imagine, for the most part, that's the case. And you'd have to think, like, who would, who would make a complaint like this? The person who would make a complaint, it would be where the landlord called and said, "I'm going to come at, at such a time, you know, is that okay?" And they say, "No, I'm going to be in the shower," or, "No, I'm, you know, bathing my kids at that particular moment," or, "The kids are in bed and you can't work on the, you can't replace the window that's in their room while they're, while they're sleeping." And I just, I can't imagine a case where you'd have to do this. If, if the tenant agrees that you can come over in five minutes, they're not going to call and file a complaint unless the landlord does something, does something different that's egregious while they're there. So it's hard for me to imagine that you'd even need waiver language, because the act of agreeing that they can come over...
Solves their problem.
Yeah, it solves their problem. They've got agreement, they have cooperation with the landlord, they don't have a combative situation there, and I would think that people could make any, make oral agreements. Oral agreements stand in, in Maryland. I mean, it doesn't, this doesn't have to be something that's a part of the law. I just don't see it.
Maybe we can suggest that you come back with whatever language you feel is necessary, and if there's still a gray area in this one, give us an option or two. We'll remember the discussion that we had, and hopefully we'll wrestle it to the ground then. Any other questions?
Councilmember Wright?
So I just want to make sure we're, well, whether there's agreement or not. There's four of us who think that we should grant the increased subpoena leeway.
My sense was that we were all agreeing on that. You have what you need.
Thanks.
Good. I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a short break and come back for the last item to discuss the Zennex amendment. amendment.[220.73]
And to make sense, what that really means is that that lot can develop up to 2.5 of the overall site area. The maximum non-residential density could be one and the maximum residential density could be a two. So there's some flexibility that's built into the way this is set up that you have different destination for residential and non-residential uses. And there are two ways that a site could develop under the new CR zone. There's a standard method and optional method. And what the standard method means really is that for anything that is under 10,000 square feet or under 10 residential units or uses that would generate less than 30 peak hour trips, you do not need to go through a site plan process.
And then 10,000 square feet is of the development or of the lot?
Of the developments. And the base FAR for a standard development is 0.5. So like my example before, if your lot's 1,000 square feet, the maximum you can build under standard development is 500 square feet, half of that.
So I'm feeling the urge to interrupt and clarify.
Please.
The current is .5 and the proposal is 2.5.
Um, yes.
Did I get that right?
The maximum.
The maximum and it also depends on the destination that's specified in the sector plan. Not all sites have a 2.5.
Okay. And I'm gonna also throw in here, having been through one of these processes, I know that parking is an issue. So this, there's a certain amount of, well, how much of the lot can you actually build on? So a .5, if you're building on half the lot, is one story.
Right.
Right. If you're building on a quarter of the lot, it's two stories.
Correct.
And so forth.
Yes.
And so 2.5, if you're building on two, on a quarter of the lot, would be 10 stories, if I have that right.
Except that there's a height limit.
But when there's a height.
Except when there's a height limit.
There is a height limit.
Except that there's a height limit. Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm just, I'll interrupt and clarify as we go here, if you don't mind.
Good. So what I've just talked about was the standard method. There is also an optional method to develop your property. Also, under the optional method, you can provide public amenities. There's five categories of public amenities and when you provide them, they give you a different number of incentive density. So when you provide proper amenities, you can achieve up to 100% of what is designated in the sector plan. Like, for example, a 2.5 or a 3.5 in the sector plan. So the gap between the base density, which is 0.5, and what is designated in the sector plan, which, for example, is 2.5, is considered incentive density. So to achieve 100%, you have to provide public amenities. And so the five groups are, these public amenities or benefit groups are transit proximity, connectivity and mobility, diversity, design and environment. And you are required to provide at least four out of those five categories in order to achieve 100% of the FAR.
I'm gonna interrupt again, if you don't mind. As far as parking goes, I know I have some sense of what the parking requirements are in Montgomery County. And if I can be so bold as to say that they often relate to a suburban, small kind of mentality and how many cars you need is related to how many cars can get to a particular location. Are parking, is parking being taken into consideration here? That's my first question. And the second is, is that one of, does that have an impact on how the amenities relate to the FAR changes?
Parking is actually, in the zone, I guess it's different from what you've observed in the past. It's, at this point, they're encouraging minimum provision of parking. And if you're located close to a transit center or a light rail stop, you are required to provide less parking. And there's a specific ratio that's in the document that say if you're within half a mile, you can produce this much, provide this much less parking. So in a sense, this new zone does take into consideration the idea of more compact living, mixed use, and hopefully people will require less parking. And then with the purple line. And of course, if you're closer to the transit station, you're required to provide less parking.
Okay, so when you said, the first thing you said was something about minimum parking requirements?
Right.
Is that a modification of the countywide zoning of parking requirements or is it?
It's not. You're still required to provide the base parking requirement based on the chapter that's in this current zone that specifies certain use or certain square footage, it's supposed to provide certain number of use. But then they have this ratio that you can, depending on where you're located, you basically just count, multiply what you're meant to provide and then reduce it from there. And I think if I give you an example, it may be a little clearer. For example, for a non-residential building, sorry, I'm on page 15 where there's a chart for minimum parking requirements of the zoning document. My line number is 255. I think it could be a little different from yours.
Same.
Good. So if you are within a quarter of a mile of the trans, of transit, you're only required to provide 20%
Wow.
of what is, what is identified in the general parking zoning ordinance part.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just make the general observation, that my reading of this proposed CR zone was finally addressing all of those concerns that we keep coming up against as we've looked at any potential developments and saying, if only they would count the fact that it's their transit, that you should be able to get credit for doing environmental things or, you know, providing public amenities, all of these kinds of things, if only the developer could get credit. And this whole process is a, is a way of codifying how they get those credits and how they get bonus densities. The more, the more amenities that they provide, the better bonus density there is. It's an incentive for transit-oriented development with green features, with less parking, with all of those kinds of things that we keep hoping for.
And I'd just like to point out that, for example, one of the incentives is that if you provide underground parking, you get a certain incentive density. So parking in particular, it's very well addressed in this particular CR zone.
And it also says things like, your building can only be so many feet from the street, you gotta provide such and such a percentage of glass, you can't have a big parking entrance, it can only be in certain places. It's all of those things that make for a walkable community, that make for the kind of things that we had from development in the 20s that kind of got changed when the, when the zoning laws all changed and became much more suburban. This is getting back to that more urban, walkable model.
And to what extent has anyone done a financial analysis of how much it would cost to develop in this kind of a zone? It appears to me, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm wondering, to what extent, this is the Silver Spring model, where you very much encourage density and you, you also encourage developers who have very deep pockets.
In large lots.
In large lots. Notwithstanding the fact that you end up with something that has many green and amenities with fewer cars. So I know that there's a balance there.
My sense is that that's an area that we're gonna spend a little time on because staff has some concerns about that.
Okay, good.
So one of the public amenities is proximity to transit.
Yes.
So it's not necessarily something that the developer provides, he's not gonna build their own apartment, right?
It's just that they happen to be.
Exactly. They're likely to live off the lot.
But it's an increased incentive to go after those kind of lots, because you can balance out the CR.
And just for the, for the parking questions, it also gives increased incentive for providing places for car share to park. You know, all of those kinds of things that we keep finding important, it incentivizes.
And I'd just like to point out, before we go into the issues, that the maximum, the zone itself allows for a maximum of a FAR of eight and a maximum height of 300 feet. However, the sector plan for the Tacoma Landley parking area, the FAR is likely, the highest is likely to be 3.5, right around where the purple line station is, and the height should be 80 feet. But again, that has not been approved yet, so it's, it's a draft number.
Isn't it 100 feet, wasn't that a mandatory?
Yeah, I think I have heard of that as well, but again, that would be a draft number.
I think currently, and this is not final, it rises to as high as 100 feet right on the intersection directly across from the train. So roughly where our pretty brick wall that says Tacoma Landley Crossroads is, would be where the maximum height is allowed.
Thank you.
And it might be 100 feet.
Okay. So now I'd like to, well, this, in general, the staff supports the CR zone. We like the flexibility that's built in with the two different densities that you're allowed. We also appreciate that the document provides direction as to what you're required to do on priority retail frontage roads. It specifies, like the mayor said, a certain percentage of building frontage along a lot, a certain amount of glass or opening has to be provided. So it's really guidelines that encourage an attractive pedestrian environment. Having said that, there are a few issues that.
I was trying to ask a question. Is workforce housing one of the public amenities? So can they get credits for?
Yes.
Or workforce housing?
Yes. Workforce housing as well as MTD. So they're both incentive to get higher density.
Workforce as well as what?
MTD, moderately priced unit.
Moderately priced.
Well, we're. Moderately priced is like 50 or 60% median income.
I thought it was 70%, but I'm not sure, but I can check and get back to you.
Is there an incentive for 30%?
It's the incentive.
Is there an incentive for 30% of median income for?
I'm not aware of that.
That creates an issue just because the median income in Montgomery County is $95,000 or something like that, or $90,000.
Yeah, it's over 100.
Maybe it's over 100 now. So if you're not, there's people who work around here who might make $30,000. So if you're not really creating an opportunity for those people to live here, you don't really get the benefit of the smart growth aspect where those people are gonna have to live somewhere and it's further away, they're gonna have to drive.
And nationally, the median income is on the order of 40,000, just to give you a rough comparison.
So now I'd like to go into some of the issues that staff found about this CR zone. And I'm gonna go through them in the order of this particular document and with the line numbers that's on your left-hand side. So the first one gets line number 209. So this is a list of permitted use in the CR zone. Under see commercial sales and service, staff is particularly concerned of the permitted automobile repair and services as well as automobile sales indoors and outdoors. Although the goal of the mixed-use zone is to encourage more pedestrian activity, a more attractive pedestrian environment, we feel that these uses don't contribute to that goal. And staff would like to recommend that the automobile repair and services become a special exception and the automobile sales indoors and outdoors be removed as a permitted use.
Any, my sense is that we would agree with that?
Yeah. I know it's crazy, but for all the anti-car stuff, it's one of the, I know a number of folks who repair cars and they're good business people, often good business people doing a good job in a good location. So I'm.
Well, I think.
But I was saying, just, sorry.
Yeah, the question is where, what is the appropriate zoning for them in the county system if they're removed from this? Or they require a special exemption? I mean, would the shops in Old Town, for example, when that becomes CR, be permitted to stay?
The Old Town area, unless they go through an entire sector plan, they will not, they may not be designated as a mixed-use area. So.
So it would be determined at the master plan or sector plan?
You can make an exemption for this specific case, but long-term, what are the thoughts about a CR zone and where these automotive?
You wouldn't kick them out?
No, they're granted.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, ultimately, you know, as, as these zones take over, if the CR zone is gonna be the significant commercial zone, where do auto businesses go?
And.
Away.
I would say away from denser transit areas, which means that you can't drop it off on your way to the metro.
Which is what's so great about Silver Spring, because you can drop it off and then get on the metro.
So it would be more, you know, a couple miles, they would have to shut. And so therefore, the special exception recommendation from staff leaves the flexibility to say, yes, you do want some.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah, that was just my comment, that there's still a special exception. So it just gives up, gives greater scrutiny to looking at when, where it makes sense to have those exist within this.
And it certainly doesn't make sense to have car sales in those places.
Okay.
Okay.
Next issue is line item 301. We're looking at the chart of the minimal landscape standards for service parking. There are two particular items that staff is concerned about. While we appreciate the idea of screening properties with a landscape buffer, for item number two, adjacent to a lot or parcel in any commercial, industrial, mixed-use zone, it's specifying that a four-foot wide continuous soil panel, et cetera, be provided. In the CR zone, parking is required to be provided in the wear of the building. So, meaning that if you have many adjacent lots and the parking's all in the back of the building, there's a chance for shared parking, there is a chance to share access. If you provide that particular continuous landscape buffer, you lose the opportunity for that. So staff would like to recommend to remove the language of a continuous soil panel.
Would you replace that with some percentage of the lot for recharge?
I have not thought about that.
The intent is to re, is for soil recharge, right?
Right. I mean, for this, right, but there are other ways in the incentive area where you are required to provide open space and green area. And for example, under the standard method, you're required to provide 10% of open space of your lot area. So there are different mechanisms that require the property owner to provide green space.
Yeah, I guess to me, the advantage here is of having a soil recharge is it's coming, it's adjacent to impervious surface. So the water runs off, it goes into a panel for, you know, maybe, I don't know, four foot's enough, but yeah. Some panel where the, it doesn't, it stops on its route to the stormwater system.
Right, it's hindsight stormwater.
On type of storm, yeah. So maybe the language could, could be changed in some way to address the concern that you have, which is the inability to cross between lots for shared parking and say, I don't know what you're, but I guess I would like to see some recommendation takes your concern into consideration.
Yeah, and we're not recommending the removal of the entire.
All you're recommending is the word continuous.
Continuous.
Right, okay.
The next item is the next line under, adjacent to a lot parcel in an agricultural or residential district, 10-foot wide width continuous soil panel, et cetera, and then six-foot high continuous hedge or fence. And so this is for mixed-use land that is adjacent to agricultural or residential. And staff feels that in such an area, a transitional area, a 10-foot wide continuous soil panel may not provide the screening that is required. And a six-foot hedge or fence are maybe more appropriate. We're thinking a six-foot fence or a wall because they provide better screening for noise, traffic headlights, any garbage or debris that's coming from the mixed-use area. So we feel that the 10-foot width continuous soil panel requirement should be removed and we will replace the six-foot high continuous evergreen hedge or fence with six-foot high continuous fence or wall.
I was gonna talk about having that deal requirement, because then you're gonna create like an intentional barrier between residential properties and mixed-use properties. And I would think we'd want people to actually walk from the residential to the mixed-use and more have a setup that kind of goes from really high-rise to, I think as the sector plan sort of vision, as you get closer into the residential, it gets lower. So it's not sort of this stark contrast within a wall or a barrier.
So are you suggesting that a landscape buffer would be more appropriate?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, it seems to me it depends on the design situation, what's going on, right? To require it regardless of.
Well, this is the minimum requirement. So you have to.
I know, that's my.
Oh, I see.
The minimum might be, have a negative impact, I think, on the walkability and lifestyle of, sort of, livability of the community.
Part of the design brief is, maybe I'm putting too much emphasis, it, it sounds like you have to have a 10-foot continuous soil panel, a planting, then there's a semi current, six-foot high continuous hedge or fence and one deciduous tree per 30 feet of foliage. It sounds like there are three elements that you have to have as the minimum? And I would agree that simply a 10-foot swath is not adequate in some places, but if it requires that you at least have a hedge that's six feet high, plus trees, plus that it's 10 feet wide, I think I could agree with Josh that a hedge could be adequate. I mean, I, some of my neighbors disagree with me, but I don't like the wall behind 7676, which is right now where we have an adjoining residential. I mean, I think it's unfriendly, it's become a place where vagrants sleep from time to time, because it's quiet there. It's not necessarily a good transition zone. And I think a hedge can block headlights if it's a good hedge as well, too. I don't know what everyone else wants to know. But I, I kind of agree, I think that's mandating a wall or a fence.
Right.
May not.
Yes, it's three elements.
Be the way to go.
I'm with you.
So therefore, we want to leave the language as it is? In that section?
Yeah, pretty.
In our recommendation.
And the next item is line number 327. The next one's over. Regarding setback. So for any building that's, building or agricultural or residential use, oh, sorry. Is everyone there? 327. A 25 feet or setback required by the adjacent lot, whichever is greater, is required. Staff feels that a 25-foot setback is, it could be excessive in an urban environment, in a mixed-used environment. And currently in the area, in the Tacoma Landley area with the cross zone, there is more flexibility in terms of the setback requirement. So we would recommend that the number 25 feet be taken away and we'll just use the setback requirement as determined by the adjacent lot. So whatever that's requiring, either the agricultural lot or the residential lot, rather.
So it would essentially take whatever the requirement is and double it, because it would be on the, on the adjacent lot and on the CR zone lot.
Correct.
In my neighborhood, for, for example, they grandfathered in the Prince George's setbacks, which is only seven feet on the side of my house, from the property line to the next. Now, it's all residential where I am, but that would mean you could have a commercial property as long as 14 feet from your dwelling, unless we're then getting rid of the grandfathering of these neighborhoods, which is most of the area we're talking about. That doesn't seem like a whole lot. Or is that, I mean, are we thinking that the setbacks are larger than that or are we thinking that that's adequate? I mean, I know you're looking at much lower heights on anything that's adjacent to residential, it's 35 or 40 feet. And adjacent does not mean with a street in between, correct? It's on the same block.
Correct.
But for us, this affects 7676 and whether those houses stay or not. That lot, that old parking lot he's got is so narrow that, you know, 25 feet, there's, you can't put anything on it. You can barely put anything on it without, with 14 feet. But I don't know.
Okay.
This is Victoria, I wondered if adding the, changing that to say, the setback required, currently required by the adjacent lot, so that it doesn't take in, in other words, it wouldn't be seven feet, because it wouldn't consider the grandfathered-in setback.
So it would be whatever the Montgomery County setback is, which I think is, is more generous?
Right.
Yeah, we should check on that, that seems fine to me, that might be more like 16 feet or.
Should I check into the number first?
Sure.
And then I'll report back next week?
My sense is it might be 16 feet.
What did you get it?
I think it's likely to be, I think mine is something like eight on the minimum side and 10 on the other side, total of something, like total of 20 with at least eight on the minimum. So we're not, you're not getting real big with them, no matter what.
Yeah? Okay.
What, commercial to residential?
But this is, is saying that we're taking out the 25 feet and it's whatever the setback is on the adjacent lot and then doubled. It would be the eight foot times two, which is 16. Which I think is the Montgomery County.
Adjacent meaning residential?
Yes, whatever the setback is.
Residential or agricultural.
Yeah.
A little, a little more information on that one would be helpful.
Sure, of course. The next item is line number 339. 339, this is directly below. Regarding public use space. So the requirement is for a lot to dedicate 10% of their net track area or net lot area for public use space. For larger properties, that is something that could be more easily accommodated, staff is that for lots that are much smaller, for example, anything that's on. anything that's under one acre, a ten percent requirement would take away a lot of the developable land. And in the Tacoma Land area, there are many small property owners. There are very large owners such as Walgreens, but there are also very, there are also many small owners along Holden Lane or even along New Hampshire. So staff would like to recommend that lots under one acre be exempt from this ten percent open space requirement.
But doesn't that space requirement sort of help incentivize consolidation? Right? So it's harder to develop a lot in an economical way. You're more likely to, see an economic term, by selling your lot. And some of what we actually need in that area is consolidation of some of the properties into larger lots to do larger mixed-use development. In that area in general.
Have any examples? What are the small lots?
Sure. For example, on Holden Lane, there's a few small property owners towards the end of Easy Storage. For some of you, you went on the grocery store. That's a couple weeks ago. The property with the big poster decal on it, that's one local owner. And the property beside it, the grocery store that we went into, that's also another small local property owner.
And they're the ones who said, don't kick us out.
They're very interested in redeveloping. And in fact, the property owner for a lot with the big poster, he has expressed his interest, and we've talked about plans. He's interested in developing three to four-story building on that site with ground floor retail. The grocery store owner, we've been working with her many times on getting a grant. She's doing all kinds of improvements on her property. She's interested in redeveloping as well.
Carmen, it says public use space.
Sure.
I tried to find a definition for public use space earlier in the document, and I found only public-owned or operated uses. What is public use space?
I actually don't have the answer.
You pave it over and let people walk back and forth, or?
Oh, it actually talks, let's see if it talks about it in the back. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Just the next page over. Under C number four, five, so it contains amenities such as seating options, shade, landscape.
I see.
And other similar benefits.
Placed under a public access easement in perpetuity. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it personally. It sounds, it sounds like a complicating factor for somebody, as you said, particularly in small lots. I guess in big lots, you can force somebody forever to do something, but.
Well, you know, BFC has a ten-acre property, and they're looking at, you know, there will be an acre of parkland. But for somebody small like the grocery, the Indian grocery store we went into, my opinion is that it's not, it's not right to discourage those folks. There are several people who have gathered, Walgreens being another one, who has gathered up about ten acres, I think. And I think there's, you know, going to be incentive to do that, particularly right on the crossroads. But some of our small Holden Lane businesses should be encouraged to do modest. Whatever the cost.
Yeah, come to the table.
She can know you want to stay in the chairs.
It's got to be broadcast.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Yes, you can.
Melissa Williams. I'm the Tacoma Park Planner for Montgomery County Park and Planning Commission. Okay, I just wanted to jump in here really quickly and try and shed a little light on the public use space. I think it's important that you look at the entire section because what ends up happening is the concern over the smaller sites is that if you look at the chart, and I know it's a little confusing, if they only have one frontage, they're, they're not beholden to the public use space.
Right, but that's under the optional method.
That's under the, that's under the.
Actually, it's the line three, mine says three forty-one, so it's just below, it's public use space B. So under optional method, you're allowed to do a percentage. But under the standard development.
Under standard development, they're saying the ten percent.
You have to do ten percent.
But you can also, they're trying to establish a public amenity fund, and that's something else that you would be able to pay into. And that's, unfortunately, they're still working out how the public amenity fund is going to work. It hasn't been established for other projects, but they're looking at the, the sector plans that are coming along now to determine exactly how that setup would work.
Did you just say that it's something that we could pay?
It's a, it's a public amenity fund. So what ends up happening is that some of the smaller property owners, in lieu of losing that particular development, they can actually choose to just say, I will make a payment into a fund that can be used to do off-site projects.
So you make, you make all of that more, more expensive?
Well, you make a contribution, and what ends up happening is that there's, there's an actual list of projects that we've actually designated in the sector plan as public amenities. And those are listed in the back, and they would make a contribution in order to do that. But I can, with regards to the way that the, the standard method worked, the standard method development process works, I think that the thought process is that most people would probably not do a standard method, a standard method project, just because economically it's probably not the best use of the land. So the assumption is after they looked at kind of the economics of the CR zone, there was this determination that most of the projects that actually came through would probably be optional method projects anyway.
And what does that, you have to, we don't know what an optional, really what an optional is.
Optional method basically means, they're saying that, the way that she described it in the beginning is.
Instead of being stuck with a, with an FIA twenty-five, you can go for the higher one, in this case, two point five.
You offer amenities and so forth.
Right.
So let's take, I mean, we're talking about Holden Lane, and that's what we're all thinking about when we think of small lots, right? And there are a number of small lots on Holden Lane. And what, and our concern here, if I know on this end of the table, our concern is that we don't want to make development for them so expensive that they can't do it. So when I hear you say, oh, they can contribute to a public use fund, well, all I can think of is, oh, we are making it more expensive for them. And so that's my.
But that's only under the standard.
That's only under, under, under the standard method, they would have to.
Should produce ten percent.
Produce a ten percent. If they actually went with a larger development, most of those, most of those property owners are, I don't want to say landlocked, but basically the only people who would kind of be required to do a percentage would be the property owners that have the end parcels. Because the people in the middle, because they only have the one frontage, would actually not be required. They would be exempt from it.
So let's go back for just a second. It sounds like you're encouraging those, those landowners for that portion of Holden Lane to collaborate and, and come together and buy or put into common ownership a number of parcels so that they can take advantage of the, of the alternative.
They actually, they actually wouldn't have to because what ends up happening is that instead of doing a, the way that she explained it previously, instead of doing a one-story development, you would be looking at encouraging two and three and four stories. And I think that that is kind of the direction that we trended towards in the sector plan is that we were looking for buildings that were multiple stories. And so just the recommendation for that, there would not be a standard method project. You would be looking at something, I mean, they can choose to do standard method. That's always an option for them. But I think because the goal of the sector plan is to encourage a mixed-use development, you're looking at having more than one story. So I don't want to necessarily say that you're trying to force people into doing a development that they wouldn't, they wouldn't ordinarily do. I think what you're trying to do is to provide enough incentives so that someone who would come in with a development would say, well, you know what, it actually makes more sense for me to actually build more than one story. Because typically, a one-story building is probably not going to be the best use of the land in a TOD development.
TOD.
Transit-oriented development. So we're, we're trying to encourage people to do developments to have commercial on the first floor with some sort of office or residential above. And so what you want to do is to incentivize a larger development. And, and so that's kind of how the, that's how this worked out. But they were also trying to be very conscious of the fact that some of the parcels, like those along Holden Lane, aren't very large. And so the way that they looked at that was saying, well, if they only have one frontage and they're sandwiched between two parcels, it probably doesn't make sense to require them to do any type of public use. Because where are you going to put it? They couldn't do it if they wanted to. And so that was kind of, okay, well, fine, if it's less than one acre and they only have the one frontage, then they're exempt. The parcels that are on the end, they may end up having two frontages because they're a corner parcel. They have, and even, they have a requirement of maybe four to six percent. So you really only end up with someone that maybe has a development where there's, trying to think, maybe the, is that the car wash that's on the corner? They would probably end up having to do ten percent if they went with the standard method. Because basically what you're saying is, I'm going to put a one-story building in the middle of a lot, and I'm going to surround it with parking. And that, those are the things that the plan is trying to.
Avoid.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid that. I'm trying to come up with the right word. Yeah, distance inch about, it's just the right word.
Okay, so how does that relate to the recommendation that you had made earlier?
I like to point out that our concern is for folks who are choosing to do the standard method. If you're building under ten thousand square feet or less than ten units, or generate less than thirty trips, peak hour trips, you can develop under standard method. You don't have to go through the site plan process. So for folks who do not want to have to go through the entire site plan process, and then they choose to develop under ten thousand square feet and so on, then they are required to provide the ten percent. So we have to keep in mind that the ten percent is with people who are choosing to develop without the site plan approval process and under ten thousand square.
And the recommendation that you made is that if it's under an acre, did you put the under an acre in your recommendation?
Right. Under an acre and, and if you're choosing to do the standard method.
Right.
If you do optional, like what Melissa said, there are incentives that would actually allow smaller property owners not to have to provide as much public space. And that's if you choose to do optional method.
I, I understand your, the push to TOD and, and, and mixed use and, and all the things that make for a certain look and footprint around transit. That's very, that's very important. I, I continue to think that small owners of properties and small businesses are a crucial resource for us. And so I'm, I'm a, I'm really, I'm convinced, Carmen, that what you and staff have come up with is a good, a good approach, even though it doesn't necessarily work toward the transit-oriented development vision that you at Park and Planning have.
Okay.
And if I can just check with you about how many, approximately how many more line locations you have for us to go through so we know how long we want to spend on one or another?
Um, we're on number four. There's just two more.
Okay, okay. Good. That's much better than twenty more.
I just wanted to make one, one additional comment. I can tell you that this was something that we had to deal with as part of the sector plan. We, we do have, an example would be a large site like the Walgreens site. They haven't gone through the subdivision process, so it's actually a ten-acre parcel that's comprised of many parcels. And they were actively looking for a way to exploit the process of not being one ten-acre site. And so I just would say, keep that in mind when you're looking at how the protections could work for some of the smaller parcels. And also, I would suggest include language that says something about maybe a common ownership. Because I can tell you that when we were going through the process with them, they were looking at ways to say, well, we'll never go through subdivision. If we can develop each parcel individually and avoid having to do any of these incentives, that's something that we would, they were actively looking to do. So I would probably say include some additional language like that.
That's Walgreens, our stellar corporate associate?
Yes. I love Walgreens.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
So the council in agreement with Councilmember Robinson on that one?
I am. Well, I was actually thinking about this, this week, and I was thinking about some of the different campaign issues that people were talking about. And it's the idea, it's the, it's the times when we support things in theory, but when the practice comes out, we have a hard time with what that outcome looks like. And I think.
Smart growth, but not, not good?
That's right. We, we support smart growth, but, you know, with that comes effects. And I think this is going to be particularly problematic around Board Six as this moves forward because people like the idea of environmentally sensitive growth. They like the idea of density where you don't have to drive your car everywhere. But if we put the purple line down University Boulevard, which I believe is going to happen, it's going to mean a shift in the way that that land is used. It's, it's going to, you know, a couple different things will happen. It'll become too valuable to be used as single-family suburban, although, you know, inner, inner-ring suburb kind of suburban uses. And, and the land will change, and the people who live there will change. And I, I think that we have to acknowledge that. And I, I think the trick is, you know, to understand that that is part of the process of natural change of cities as they kind of ebb and flow and, and it's, I'm sorry?
It's not a city.
What's not a city?
Langley Park. It's an unincorporated county area.
That's not the point. It's the.
Well, I'm, I'm being picky with that.
It's, it's the, the ebb and flow of how communities develop. And, I mean, I think the trick is, like, how do you, how do you, it's the same challenge of how do you protect the vulnerable populations, the moderate and low, low moderate income people at the thirty percent of area median income? How do you protect them and make a place for them in a new space that's functional while recognizing that the economic forces are going to be probably greater than many of the rules that we're able to make here, even in the planning process. And in some ways, I think when we make, when we make adjustments for some of these specific situations, it is, it's counterproductive to the larger goal that we're trying to achieve. And I think the same is true in the, in the economic development realm. The proprietary-run businesses are very important to us. And we know that smaller stores, smaller parcels of land, this is true in the, in the landlord-ing business as well. The, the, the smaller parcels of land are manageable in terms of, of business models and the amount of capital that you have to put into it for folks who want to run their own small businesses there. But at the same time, the economic pressure of putting in this transit hub is going to exert tremendous pressure on that. Eventually, they'll roll over in, in spite of the accommodations that you might make in, in this time, timeframe here. Eventually, the, the plots will be bought one by one, hopefully not by Walgreens since they apparently don't want to provide any public space, but maybe somebody else who's developer. And I just want to, I want to keep that in mind because I'm not sure that, I'm not sure this is the best way to balance those concerns. I, I really liked it when Alana was, was working with the folks in the area across from Shoppers, talking about how, you know, kind of condoize, condoizing some of the, we were talking about having a larger development there, and really working functionally with economic development team to preserve a place for those, those folks, even in a larger, you know, a, a single property, but for them to have their own place where they, where they still own their business and own some portion of it, maybe through, through condoizing the pieces or different, you know, ideas that might happen there. So I know this is a big process, and it's moving forward, and it affects all the things that happen at the county level, but yeah, I'm not sure that this is the way to go, to sort of change these line by line based on a, a single area that we're talking about, especially when that single area is, is in this transit-oriented development area. It's like you can't have your cake and eat it too.
But this is Tacoma Park. Yeah, I mean, you're very right in that the sector plan and also the zoning and the purple line, you know, these are all changes, and they will change how the land is used. And so part of that is the types of programming that we put into place, the type of outreach that we do. Carmen's been doing a lot of outreach with the small businesses. The better that we know them. The better that we know them and trust them, the more that we're able to work with both them and the property owners and the management companies that manage these properties and the individual smaller businesses. You know, we are able to work with them in order to make sure that there are the programs in place. Um, you asked a question earlier about affordable housing. Because the county doesn't have a program for very low-income housing, it worked through their zoning. There are lots of county programs, though, that do provide low-income housing and, and both through tax credits and then just straight subsidies for the development and the preservation and the rehabilitation of units. And so those are all the types of programs that work as a package. And part of what the city does is to find those partners and develop those relationships. The zone isn't going to do it all. It's only a small piece of, of what will both allow the Tacoma-Langley crossroads area to both change, but also retain, um, what makes it, you know, an important part of the area. Because there are things about that area that are extremely positive. We all know also, there are also aspects that are extremely negative. And, uh, we want to keep what's good, but change what's not good, so.
And no matter what we do, all of this will probably take 25 years.
It's not coming tomorrow.
So, uh, if I could just circle back and get a sense from the council on this proposal from staff to make less than one acre exempt for the standard method project to have 10% of the track set aside for public use?
With, with some language about consolidated parcels or common ownership? That-
With, with that additional language to come back next week, is that the direction that we're happy with? Not seeing nods, no? Yes?
Can I move on?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out one thing I heard, which I don't think was quite the characterization of what I heard when we talked to the residents on the Holton Lane tour in that area. I didn't hear anyone say that they wanted to stay in the building they're in. What I heard them say is that they wanted to be there. They wanted to have a place in whatever happens. So I don't think, like, preserving small parcels in whatever we decide in the language is the right approach to, that, that doesn't get at what they're concerned about. Because I heard a different characterization of what they were saying.
They wanted affordable rents, if that's the word we had.
My sense, my sense would be, if they are currently owners, they wouldn't want affordable rents in somebody else's larger building. They still want to own their own building and be master of their own destiny.
And if Walgreens is any judge, or the former owners of the Walgreens parcel, affordable rents aren't necessarily what will be the end product in residential development.
Well, I'm not sure either.
And I'll just remind folks that one of the other incentive areas, um, in this proposed zone is preservation of locally-owned small businesses on-site eligible for incentive densities.
Right.
What else you got?
Take it away.
So what we're looking at is the five categories of, um, public benefits that a developer or a property owner can provide in order to achieve 100% density. As I mentioned before, there are five categories: transit proximity, connectivity and mobility, diversity, design and environment. Altogether, there are 33 elements. And staff, in order to test out the, the applicability of these elements, staff took the lot that I've talked about on Holton Lane with the large poster and see if they were to develop, redevelop, which of these incentives could they actually use? And we found that out of the 33 elements, there were 16 that were more applicable, more easily applicable to their land. And so just to give you an example, one of the incentives is to provide underground parking. For a small lot, it's something that's very expensive to do, and they require that all parking be provided underground in order to get that incentive. Another example would be, um, a specific percentage of unit mixed within a residential development. So if you're not doing residential, that element wouldn't apply to you, you couldn't use it. So what we found is that for larger property owners, these 33 elements may as well be very useful for them to achieve maximum density. But again, for smaller property owners, they may not be very useful. And, um, we would like to recommend that an additional incentive be added that would benefit property owners that are under one acre. So by right, because they are under one acre, a certain percentage of incentive would be granted.
So it would be table of density incentives, incentive zoning table, and one element would be property is under one acre?
Right.
And because they're one acre, they would get reduced need to do incentives, or it would, how would that work?
Or they're just getting one freebie point.
They, they get, they get an automatic credit for being small?
Right.
And they don't have to go through the site plan? Wow!
Well, you did ask for the method, you have to go through the site plan. Well, for example, the transit proximity, the developer didn't do anything. The freebie point was because you're located within a certain area. So now we're saying that if you're smaller than one acre, then you get a freebie point too.
Because there are other areas that are necessarily closed off to you.
Right.
That seems like we could put that out there and-
Yeah.
The county council might make it and they might not, and we could argue for it.
Can we get them?
We have nothing left to stand on to argue it.
Can we get them boxed in there? Like, it feels like we're starting to get into, like, very detailed about each lot and then not knowing what the lots are, it's sort of hard to do that. But then I go back to Colleen's perspective. I feel like, I'm not sure you want to get to that level of, and Colleen is the city planner. You want to get to that level of detail around incentivizing small lot versus big lot and whether small, I go back to again, whether small lot is the right, you know, do you want to create incentive for small lots to develop like that versus larger parcels to get developed into mixed use that has lots of different size properties within the mixed use lot?
Well, staff is like, smaller lots, especially those that are under one acre, it's at a disadvantage. And if you don't provide the right type of conditions for them to develop, maybe they won't be able to take advantage of this new mixed use zone altogether.
Or maybe they'll sell and someone will come on lots together and develop the property.
Yeah, Walgreens.
Yeah, I was going to say-
It's not always Walgreens.
I know.
Yeah, but I, I don't particularly want to be in the position of closing, of, of making it just that much more difficult for a small property owner to do something where they want to do the right thing and end up handing it off to some more than likely, uh, remote property owner to do their big project. I just don't feel like that's where I want to go.
Yeah, maybe so.
So I'd be, I'd be happy to-
Recommend it.
Recommend the, uh, the credit for less than an acre. I understand the argument for consolidation. And if I were a consolidator, I'd probably want to do it, hope I'd get a better project and more money, but then that, in the end, sucks the money out of the community. So I would keep it in the community with a smaller one.
Okay.
Just if you want to keep it in the community, incentive should be for property owners who live in the community. That should be the incentive. Because just because it's a small lot doesn't mean the person lives in-
But there's a greater, there's a greater possibility that a small lot will, the owner of a small lot will, this would be a good research project, probably.
I don't think that's true.
To the extent that it's small, does it mean that it's owned by a fewer number of people or more people who are more local?
It might be owned by a fewer number, it doesn't mean it's-
I think that there'd be a correlation between small lots and local owners.
I guess local depends on what you mean. You mean live in Tacoma Park?
Nearby. And a large, a large, um, building is going to be owned by a large corporation, and that corporation will have a very diffuse ownership. That's all, I, I would stand by, I would say that that is a comment that would be hard to argue against.
You're, you're right. That's, that's absolutely right. You're more likely to get local owners or people who are actually there, even if they live in Hyattsville or Bethesda, wherever. They're going to be there operating the business and they're going to be creating more jobs because their small businesses create more jobs than the Walgreens and Walmart does. Um, you know, the question that I would ask you, the answer that I guess that I would like you to come back with is, you know, what are the densities that are required to support something like a Purple Line? Because the other side of that is we'll be arguing our tale of war later about how we don't have enough density around the transit stations to get the desired effect. And, and you see that in the Tacoma Metro Station with the driving congestion that's around the station right now that's created by people driving to get, I mean, there's a guy in my ward who drives from Avenue to go park his car in the CVS lot and then gets on the, um-
Oh, my God.
On the train, and he gave me a ride home the other day. He's a pretty nice guy. But actually, I know several people in Tacoma Park who do that. Most of the people that I see getting in and out of the lots down there are people who live in Tacoma Park, but-
Scooters. Scooters is the answer for that.
Yeah. But I mean, that's, that's the other side of the equation. So you're asking a group of laypeople to, you know, make decisions, and they are, about the, about the things that we understand from the world that we interact with. And, and we understand the small, the small, because we see that effect. But there's a bigger picture here of what it really means to put in a big transit station there and it's, you know, what is the density? I know that they rate it in hectares and not acres, but maybe you could convert it for us. The, the kind of density that you, that is required, and what does that physically look like?
Well, if public transit means, um, a reduction of small, of small business, then I, I'm not convinced that public transit in that light is all that great an idea, smart growth or not.
I would come back to Alana's work that she's done about trying to protect the small businesses and come up with, you know, a different kind of model for development beyond selling everything to, um, people who assemble lots and build big box retail. It's possible to do. You know-
That marked by the council.
Development was done that way before they came up with this, this model.
And there are a number of cities that have very active small, they have downtowns with a lot of small businesses.
Consolidation-
Cities with their, cities with their own zoning.
Right. Well, that's what makes all the little neighborhoods in San Francisco so much fun to visit, is they, they still have that.
Yeah, Charlotte's Village is another place to look. Smaller, lower density. Downtown Tacoma Park?
I will look into the Councilor Pauling's question regarding density that's required to support the Purple Line, and I'll bring it back next week.
I'm sure that the county or the state has done some modeling about what that looks like. And if nothing else, you could get, you could get pictures of comparable areas that would show people who aren't familiar with it, what that looks like.
And I just want to quickly go back to Councilmember Wright's question about big corporate ownership and versus small business owner. Just in my experience of working and talking with all the property owners, I guess business owners in the Cross Road area for the, the new AFS campaign, it's much easier to talk to a small business owner. They're there, you see them, they're there all the time, you can talk to them versus going to, for example, Starbucks. They cannot make any decision right there, have to call their corporate office, no, we can't do that, nobody calls me back. And so it's just an example of, um, how sometimes smaller business or property owners are easier to work with, or more concerned about the area, they take more pride, they're more likely to participate versus a big operation that's-
Yeah, my point about lot consolidation doesn't have anything to do with whether you have a big faraway corporation or close corporation. You could do lot consolidation with a land trust model where you have condominium setups for condominium, meaning ownership structure for small businesses. But it makes it easier to develop that lot in a large coherent way for what you want in the neighborhood and how you want the density developed than quarter acre lot here, quarter acre lot there, trying to build the level of density. That's, that's the point I'm trying to make here.
Josh, I'm not saying that that's incorrect, but I feel uncomfortable telling the person who has a building that covers a third of an acre or a half an acre, well, we've just, you know, yeah, there's no model for you, you know, you get to sell your property and, and someone else gets, you know, to consolidate these lots if that's what they want to do.
No, but you're saying that-
And I don't see the option there.
You're saying that we're setting up an incentive for them to make it even easier, right? So I'm not saying disadvantage them, I'm just saying, like, why create an extra incentive to make it even easier?
Easier for what?
Easier to, to stay as you are a small business owner with a, with a relatively small property.
Right. If the economics make sense to do that, fine, but why offer an additional incentive?
Well, we could value that. At least I value it.
You, you value having small local-owned businesses here. But you don't have to necessar, that doesn't mean, doesn't correlate to having small individual property ownership, right? Like-
But there are some small properties in existence and where's the, that they shouldn't have the right to own those properties and redevelop them within this plan.
No, we're saying they can, they just shouldn't get the economic advantage to do it.
I see they're giving it a disadvantage either way, but, well-
I don't think we're discussing the argument tonight, and it's five of 11, and when it gets to be 11, our decision-making ability ratchets down by a large percentage. And so we have one more to do?
One more. And could I just add something that, or it just reminded me, where staff feels that currently smaller businesses are at a disadvantage, so we're bringing them even with the bigger corporations. We're not giving them extra incentive, we're just making it more even.
Right. They're, they only have 30, 16, 30-thirds of an advantage, and we're trying to get them to 17, 30-thirds of an advantage, or whatever, a parity.
Okay. A last one?
Yes.
Uh, line number 855.
Well, that's a good, that's a big number.
Yeah, that's way near the end. Existing approvals.
Right, existing approvals. So under existing approvals, um, any property that's lawfully existing now, or property that has received an approved development plan, um, before the enactment of its CR Zone, or property that has received an approved preliminary or site plan before the sectional map amendment happens, all of those properties, they can renovate or reconstruct or enlarge up to 10% of their existing floor area, up to a maximum of 30,000 square feet without going through site plan. So that means if you are, if you're built, you have a building that's existing right now, um, you could enlarge your building or reconstruct your building up to 10% and you don't have to go through a site plan process. Staff does not feel comfortable about this, there isn't, if they don't, it's, I guess depending on lot size, it could be a big area, it could be small, it, it depends on the lot area. But this does not specify the type of process that they will go through. It just specified that it does not require site plan process. There may not be a chance for staff to comment on their reconstruction. And also, the area, um, this particular, um, regulation, it, it loses- And also, the area, this particular regulation, it, it loosens up or it's more, it's much more flexible in a bad way than what's currently allowed under the cross zoning, which is anything over 1,000 square feet, you're required to go through a site plan.
What a difference.
Yeah, how did we get to 30,000 here?
30,000 or 10%.
Well, the 10% is okay if you have a maximum of, whichever is less is less than 30,000 square feet.
And just give you an example, BS Salt's property, so Safeway Starbucks, that plaza, their 10% would be close to 15,000 square feet.
The whole plaza?
Right, if you calculate the whole plaza's existing floor area, 10% of that is 15,000 square feet.
So what's your recommendation?
Well, right now, this is not very clearly defined as to what's reconstruction, does that mean they can completely demolish the existing building if they rebuild up to, I guess, 110% of what they used to be?
So you're saying that they could, maybe that they could demolish the entire shopping, shopping center, rebuild it, add up to 10% more and not have to go through site plan? Is that what I just heard you say?
I don't have a clear definition of what's reconstruction, reconstructed or enlarged is.
Come on, Melissa.
Yeah.
waving your finger, let's go.
Okay, I'll make it real quick. Running back to the front, it's Melissa Williams again. The definition of reconstruction is something that Montgomery County is still struggling with at this time, so there is not a clear definition as to what reconstruction is. The idea is that reconstruction applies to a building that, for whatever reason, natural disaster, fire burns down, you're allowing them to rebuild the same building and add an additional 10% onto it. They haven't defined that, but internally, that's what the development review department typically thinks of as reconstruction. It's something that they can't just come in and decide, we're tired of this building, we want to tear it down and avoid site, you know, the review process and rebuild. It's basically if the building catches fire or if it's destroyed through some sort of disaster, that we're going to allow them to rebuild the same building.
Now, on, on my block, just a block from here, there were two small salt box cottages that were renovated and about maybe a couple of feet of the frontage wall were left and they turned from about a 1,500 square foot...
I think I heard that story.
1,500 square foot of building to about a 7,000 square foot building in each case. And those were renovations, that, that wasn't a reconstruction. And I see the word before reconstructed as renovated, so how does that play into things?
They're, they're still trying to get the legal definition because apparently there had been cases in the past where part of the wall was left and that was considered a renovation because there wasn't a percentage attached to it.
Right.
So just being completely honest, that is something that internally they're still struggling with, trying to find the, the appropriate legal definition because every time it's defined, of course, the planning attorneys find a way around it. So they're, they're still trying to figure out exactly how that's going to work. But I can tell you that right now, the, the thought process is that you're talking about, for whatever reason, the building blows up, it burns down.
Yeah, yeah, you said that, but it's, it does, what's the renovated?
Renovation, their, their thought for renovation is that basically, an example would be the Safeway. The Safeway's changing ownerships, they decide that they want to renovate, you're going to give them the opportunity to enlarge what they have, but it wouldn't...
Go up to 10% without a site plan.
Up to 10%, without a site plan, but the assumption is not that they're going to tear down the entire structure, they would be allowed to build on to it.
But the, the, the 1,000 square foot additional construction now, or beyond 1,000 requiring site plan, that's pretty different from this paragraph.
It is, it's extremely different.
And how do you address that in your thought processes?
That was something honestly that they, they tried to, to weigh all of the options and, you know, the development community came in and said, this is very restrictive, it doesn't allow for us to do the things that we want to do. And I think what they thought was, this is kind of a happy medium between not giving them this, you know, the store, but still having a process that weighs in and says, if it's only 10%, then it's not so restrictive that smaller property owners can't take advantage. And they looked at what the average size was for a typical outbuilding. So if someone came in and said, I want to add, I have a 10 acre site, most of it's parking and I want to add something to it, how many buildings are you going to allow that person to add to that site?
And you're, and you're saying here they can go up to 30,000 square feet?
And in that case, they would be able to go up to whichever is greater, 10% or 30,000 square feet.
Whichever's less.
Whichever, I'm sorry, whichever's less, whichever's less.
And what's the thinking for not requiring a site plan for a building that's knocked down by a storm?
That, that is actually what's on the books now. And, and so I don't, it, it was kind of the thing, this is what they have now and you can't necessarily take everything away. So, I mean, that's one of the things that internally they're dealing with now and I can tell you guys, if that's, if that's something that the city is not necessarily in favor of, you know, by all means bring it up because this is still a working document.
But the part, the part that I don't, excuse me, the part I don't understand is if somebody had to rebuild their building because it was knocked down by a storm, they would still have to comply with all plumbing, electrical, all the other code things that are modern?
It is...
So why do they get a pass on...
I, I think historically, that is just the way that the previous zone allowed them to bypass that process because the thought was, if I own a building and the building burns down, you know, it's basically that you should be grandfathered in, I should be able to put it back exactly the way that I had it.
Because that's what insurance will pay for.
Right, so. Colin, you got to go?
Yeah, I actually, in, in, in theory, I don't object to this, but where I think it has caused us concern is where you have grandfathered uses and grandfathered elements. So to not sort of pick on particularly businesses that we've talked about, let's talk about my house. So my house has like a grandfathered seven foot space between the, my back wall and the, and the fence that divides me from my neighbor's house. And if I could build 110% onto my house without doing anything about that, it would make my neighbors uncomfortable because I would have a more ominous presence. So particularly in Tacoma Park where we have smaller lots and where we have grandfathered, you know, lot lines and then grandfathered uses, which if it were to come back again through a, a review, we might not be so excited about that particular grandfather and special exception use being exactly where it's at. So I think that's, that's the, like, in, in theory, I don't object to a 10% bump up on the, on the developments, but for us, when it's grandfathered special exceptions, grandfather, you know, changes in the, in the lots, then, and it's right up letting residential areas, that makes a, that makes a difference for us.
Melissa, the last time I was at the planning board, you remember?
Yes, I remember.
There was a lengthy discussion, I just wanted to know if it was directly related to this, about our Tacoma Langley sector plan and a complaint by one of the developers' representatives about the 10,000 square foot maximum of a site plan.
They wanted more.
Yes.
They wanted...
Is that why we're seeing more here?
Actually, it was always 10% or 30,000 square feet. What they wanted was everything to be completely grandfathered in and to be allowed 25% increase. And I think it was a maximum of 50,000 square feet. So, I mean, that was going nowhere. That was kind of a conversation that we agreed was not going to happen.
But nonetheless, the sector plan says 10,000 feet and this says 30,000 square feet.
The sector plan can't...
Can't override?
We can't override the zone. The only flexibility that we had was where we were talking about the density incentives. I mean, this is one of the things that we can't, this is a zoning issue and the sector plan can't necessarily override that. Does that make sense?
I don't think they were talking about density, but they were talking about the same thing in the interim, being able to develop their property without a site plan.
They were talking about interim, right, interim uses and, and having, you know, outbuildings that were put on, on the, in the parking lot and things like that. And the way that we dealt with that, the response was always, that is something that's a zoning issue that would not, the sector plan doesn't control that.
Okay.
So whatever the CR zone says in relationship to grandfather clauses and, and the existing approvals, we would have to, the sector plan has to go along with it. So that's why I'm saying if there's, if that's language that you guys feel is not going to be, is not going to be relevant for the city of Tacoma Park, I would bring it up because you're probably not going to be the only municipality that has to deal with it. I mean, because you have Kensington as well that has similar development with some of the smaller property owners. So that may be something you necess, you may want, guys want to bring up and...
Well, Carmen, what's the staff recommendation here?
The staff would like to see that a reduction in the number, for example, instead of 10% of the existing area, we could consider 5% or 10,000 square feet.
Is there any sense that, again, a minimum lot, a lot size would have a play here so that...
The lots really do vary a lot in the, for example, in the sector plan area, so it's difficult to say. Because you, for example, you have Walgreens that, their 10% is very large and then you have a small, really small property, an acre. But in this case, I think irrelevant of the lot size, we could go for the 5% and then a 10, 10,000 square feet.
See, I would like that not to apply where there's grandfathered use or the grandfathered, other conditions of it that are grandfathered, I think. They should either build back exactly what was grandfathered or they have to come back again.
Can we agree that we like staff's recommendation for a lower number and any other aspects to that one that might augment our recommendation? Councilmembers can suggest things and work with staff earlier rather than later this week and come up with some possibilities and if there's anything that we need to have, you know, a choice or two, we can deal with it with the resolution next week, Councilmember Wright.
I don't have a comment on anything specific other than the general process. I think you worked very hard at all the details associated with this. I found, going line by line, kind of a maddening process because we are laypeople, so we don't have a really good incentive. We might conjecture about what we think's going to happen if we approve, you know, approve one thing or the other, but we don't really know, so we're not the experts. I would have much rather had a discussion at a higher level of, do we, are we concerned about preserving small businesses to stay there? And have that level of discussion and then you guys go tell us what we should do in the code. Because to me, and now I feel like we approved all these different things, I don't even know if they're in conflict or are they, is it like a coherent set of recommendations that we have for what we're then recommending to the county or is it a bunch of different things where we just thought, this sounds right based on what we think we want, but, so that, that's my only piece of advice when we go through these things in the future, I think it'd be much more helpful to have a higher level of discussion.
And, and if I can add, that I think it would be helpful in the resolution to have some language that says basically, it's about time that the county is providing the opportunity for mixed use development, mixed use redevelopment in the CR zone and incentivizing, and I'm just going to mention a couple of these things that we haven't necessarily talked about just so anybody who's listening to this might realize that it's not just about all of these picky little areas that we've been looking at, but this incentivizes providing community gardens, community facilities prevailing, preserving local retail, preserving historic resources, public art, public plaza and open space, exceptional design, bioretention and stormwater recharge, conveying parkland, dark skies, energy efficiency and generation, green walls, lead ratings, rainwater reuse, transferable development rights, tree canopy, vegetated areas and vegetated roofs. So that there are a lot of these areas that weren't something that we had to talk about this evening, but that we, we ought to say in the resolution that overall, it's a, it's a good concept and a lot of the, a lot of the things that we always want to see as part of a project or that we want to try and provide in any redevelopment we do, it's, it's incentivizing those right things. So that in that context, the, the particular areas that we're concerned with are only seeking to make what's a good proposal better. Councilmembers, never?
And I would just like to add, I really appreciate having Melissa here.
Extremely helpful. Extremely helpful.
And we always enjoy working with Park and Planning.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Return.
Devil, devil. Careful, careful.